Of you who may not know me, my name is Eric Wedd. I am an assistant professor at East Carolina University. And also FAO's regional coordinator for the International Year of Small Scale Fisheries. And for the celebration of small artisanal fisheries and aquaculture in the region. And so this session today is funded by the European Union through a project that we have ongoing with them. And so within the region, we're celebrating Ayafa through the teams of recovery and resilience. With gender and youth as our cross cutting teams. Within those teams, we have social resilience, intersectoral linkages and innovation as some of the sub teams under that. Our speakers this afternoon will talk about some of the topics around those and operationalize those ideas a bit more. And so we'll talk about community engagement, we'll talk about recovery from COVID. We'll talk about national intersectoral linkages and case studies that have that looked at those those intersectoral linkages. And so the idea behind this session is for us to continue to highlight some of the activities we have ongoing to celebrate Ayafa. And lastly, just as another plug, so Ayafa over the past year, we've selected about twenty four small scale fisheries and aquaculture champions from across the region. Some of those champions are with us in the room and those champions are folks who have exemplified the ideals of the Small Scale Fisheries Guidelines and have exemplified the goals that we look for, that we're trying to accomplish on small scale fisheries. And aquaculture. And so without further ado, I will invite our, sorry, one last plug. If you have items for the silent auction, please contact Joanna, she's raising her hands. The silent auction helps us to get students to come to the conference and so it's very important. So if you have any items, please track down Joanna, she will be looking for you. And so without further ado, I will introduce our first speaker, Dr. Megan Davis, who will talk to us about community engagement in Puerto Rico. So Megan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Eric, and good afternoon, everyone. I'm excited to be here today to talk with you about our Queen Conch aquaculture work in Puerto Rico. It's in the southeast area of Puerto Rico and also you can see our team there that are in Puerto Rico that work with Conservación Conciencia. And also with the Naguabo Fishing Association. Before I get started with that, I just wanted to give you a little bit of background. I am from Florida Atlantic University Harbor Branch Oceanographic Institute. And I lead the Queen Conch Lab team. And we have a vision to have a queen conch farm in every Caribbean country. For the sake of the species, for the sake of the ecosystem, and for the sake of the people who depend on the fisheries. In this map, you can see that we have sites that we're already working in on Queen Conch aquaculture. And that would be in the Bahamas and two sites in the Bahamas. And also, as you follow the map down, you'll see Puerto Rico. You'll also see that we have a site in St. Eustatius in Jamaica and also in Curacao. And then we've been speaking with others throughout the region. And those are the ones with the open circles. So we hope that those will be new sites in the coming years. So a little bit more about where Naguabo, Puerto Rico is located, you can see the map of San, Puerto Rico there up the top is San Juan. The little star that you see there is where Naguabo is located about an hour from San Juan. And we are inside a fishing association. So the aquaculture facility is part of the fishing association. The fishing association has about twenty two members and they invited us to come in and be part of the community there. So our staff are made up of the fishers and also of local members of the community. Here are the the partners and you can see in the pink circles are the staff that work with Conservación Conciencia. And up the top, you can see my co P I, Remundo Espinoza. He's the executive director of Conservación Conciencia. And then over in the green circles is Carlos Velasquez and he's with, he's the president of the Naguabo Fishing Association. He's our collaborating organization lead. And Julio Ortiz also works closely with us. And then you can see Harbor Branch is part of the partnership. We have a number of different objectives that we're working on. We're funded through the Salt and Salt Kennedy Noah. And we're funded to build partnerships and to build a queen conch hatchery, which we have successfully built and we're expanding it now. We're open to others in the region. We've had people and groups from Bahamas, Dominican Republic. Let's see, we've had Jamaica there. And so we invite others from the Caribbean and also from other parts of Puerto Rico. We're also looking at some value added ways to extend the value of the queen conch meat and also the conch shells. And then we're starting to expand in a couple of other areas of Puerto Rico. So it all begins with aquaculture training. And so I spend about a week a month. In the first year, I was probably there a total of six months doing training on the ground. And we use the Queen Conch Aquaculture Manual, which is, which is open source available. And just recently, we also have a Spanish version that's been published as well. The egg masts that we use for the hatchery are collected by the fishers. They know where the breeding areas are. They bring in a very small piece, just a fraction of the egg mass, about an eighth to a quarter. And they leave the rest in the ocean to be able to hatch. We bring about three to six of those in at a time. Our seawater source is right in front of the Naguabo Fishing Association. And so it's, it's in a bay that's, that's open, open to the ocean. And we pump it into reservoirs and we can hold about four thousand gallons at one time. It goes through a series of filters and ultraviolet sterilizer. And then we also have a chiller to keep it cool at about twenty eight degrees Celsius. The conch hatchery itself is designed to produce two thousand conch. And we feed them isocrysis and catastros to microalgae that we grow there. And it takes it in Naguabo, it takes about twenty six to thirty seven days to get through the larval cycle. It's typically a three week cycle. So we're still working on ways to, to improve the larval cycle there. And we use the tridle seagrass blades, the blades that fall off the seagrass to induce a cue or to use as a cue to induce metamorphosis. And then we have a juvenile recirculating nursery system. This is on a constant recirculation, a small little pump pumps it through the sand. And you can see the little juveniles there. We make our own diets. We, we feed them a mixture of oliva, which is a seaweed that we grow at Harbor Ranch. So we dry it and I bring it down to Puerto Rico. We mix it with a chow that's actually fed to shrimp. And then we make it into a gelatin and then we feed it to the, to the conch. So our next steps are to have some mobile labs in Puerto Rico. We're looking at two different locations, one near San Juan in Cantanial and one near Mayaguez. And this would be working with the fishing associations there. So we're building two mobile labs, two mobile labs that are nurseries so we can provide the seed conch. And then the, the fishers and the community there can raise them. This was modeled after a mobile lab that was recently built and shipped down to the, to the Bahamas. Which is in, which you can see in this photo and that's in Great Exuma and it's actually a mobile hatchery. I was just down there last week and we were testing it and getting ready for the, the egg mass season next year. So the other thing that we're doing at the Naguabo Aquaculture Center is also working with sea vegetables. They're actually halophyte plants. They're salt loving plants. And we grow them, there's three different species that are local to Puerto Rico. They are edible. There also can be used for restoration of sand dunes and other wetland areas. They grow in conjunction as an aquaponic system, saltwater aquaponic system with our queen conch. But we're also looking to introduce some other animals like lobsters and maybe the, the fighting conch. And crabs and other species. And then the nutrients from those can develop the sea vegetables. We do this at Harbor Branch. So the technology that we've been developing in Florida, we're, we're bringing down to Puerto Rico. This work is funded through the USDA ARS and also through Puerto Rico Seeground. And this is our new aquaponic system. You can see that it's stacked tanks. There are, there's two stacks of them. And on the very top, we have something called a nutrient flow technique system. It's like a hydroponic system. And you can see one of the plants, you can see the roots. This is after one month of planting. So they're really enjoying the nutrients that we provide them from the conch system. And so I was talking about that they're edible. So we're developing markets for the culinary dishes. I understand in Puerto Rico that this was a food source and maybe is in some households still. And then for coastal restoration and there's a number of groups in Puerto Rico that are doing coastal restoration that we will work with. And then we involve the community at all levels of the work that we do. The fishers that are involved with us, they're, they're paid for their services. So it's diversified alternative incomes for the fishers. It's part of the grants. When we write the grants, we make sure that we provide funding for all the fishers. They, we also have local contractors that come and help, help us with the plumbing and putting systems together. And then I also want to mention that we had a fishers exchange last November. We had fishers from the Bahamas come and spend a couple of days with us learning. They were learning about the fishing association and then they were on both sides. Puerto Rico and Bahamas fishers were sharing lots of stories about fishing and, and really learning from each other. So community is the heart of our project and I'm so fortunate to be able to go down there and, and work with such an amazing team. And with that, these are our contact information. If you have Instagram, I, I keep up with the social media and post the work that we're doing. And this is Remundo Espinoza with me down in Puerto Rico. So thank you for the opportunity to share with you today.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Megan. Any questions? Megan did an excellent job of staying on time. So we have plenty of time for questions. Any questions for Megan in the room or online? Going once for Megan, going twice. Oh, there we go. Perfect. Yeah. If you want to head to the mic. Go for it.
Well, Megan Graciela here. So what is the plan after you have the conch reach a certain site? Are you reseeding the area of Naguabo that bay that it's so full of nutrients that are not supposed to be there?
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for that question, Graciela. So yes, the plan is, is to grow them to seven centimeters, seven to eight centimeters. And then from that stage, they'll be put into the nursery areas. We'll do an acclimation first before they are released. And so we're working with the fishers on identifying areas. And we know from the work that Bob Glazer and Gabe Delgado have done is that it's really good to be able to put them in areas where there's already a nursery, where there's already conch there to have safety and numbers. And so we'll be, we'll be working on that. And also I see Rich Apple Dorns in the audience too. And they did a lot of great work and in also seeding on the southwest coast of Puerto Rico. So we'll use all of that information to help us to, to do the best reseeding and restocking that we can. So thank you for that question.
So this is kind of a two part question. Do you, you said the time to metamorphosis is a bit shorter in the wild than what you see in the lab? Is that right?
Okay. So this is a really interesting question that you bring up. So in the wild and for my dissertation work way back in the day, I did a lot of work looking at natural feeds and they'll actually grow and be ready for metamorphosis in like fourteen to sixteen days in the wild. Cause they can eat all the phytoplankton they want, even in that oligotrophic water. But in the laboratory, they're very dependent on the quality of the water and the algae that we grow them. So every laboratory in the Caribbean that I've worked in has a slightly different range of how long the larvae will grow for. So typically it's three weeks, but it can be three to four weeks as well.
Okay. And then can you just elaborate? You mentioned using the decaying seagrass to trigger metamorphosis. Was that right?
Yes. My favorite stage of the aquaculture of the queen conch is metamorphosis because it's amazing. They're swimming around with their lobes and then they become competent. They start showing all these signs. They have, they have a proboscis that they can use for eating. They start putting on gills, filaments, and then they just start doing this swim crawl stage. So they really start to morphologically tell us that they're ready for metamorphosis. And they need a cue. They won't go through spontaneously. So they need something. And, and what we found out is it's a trophic cue. So the, because there's seagrass dwelling animals, they enjoy eating or settling and eating in their seagrass beds. So we found that the diatoms that are lined on the tridle blades. Now there's also cues such as laurentia extract, laurentia is found in their seagrass beds, but you have to make an extract. Hydro peroxide, believe it or not, will also cue them because it's kind of an oxygen reduction thing that's going on. So there's lots of different cues, but really the more natural we can be, the better. So thank you for that.
Yes, we'll take one quick question.
So I find this very interesting. Was the predation issue solved for reseeding?
Oh, no, I don't think we're ever going to solve the predation issue. But what we're going to try to do is have conch that are morphologically similar to the wild. And the strength of the shell is important and also acclimating them. And so there's all this criteria that needs to go into it. So we know that even in the wild, when they're one years old, they're still predation. So it's really going to be a matter of how do you prepare those conch to be able to survive with their cohorts in the wild? So thanks for that question.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Megan. Yeah. Another round of applause for Megan, please.
Okay, thanks.
Next up, we will go to the Philippines where Sarah will talk to us about how perceptions of marine protected areas can be transferred here to the Gulf and Caribbean.
To make it applicable. But uh, so just wanted to say hello. Hi, I'm Sarah. And I will be talking about the perceptions of fishers and NPAs in the Philippines and sort of some lessons learned there. And I'll briefly go through some of, you know, just the background as well, but I'm sure a lot of us already are very familiar with that. But typically, when we think of overfishing, we tend to think of closer. Okay. We tend to think of these large commercial vessels and really taking a lot of fish at one time. But we also have small scale fishers. And on the surface, this might not seem like a contributor to overfishing. But they make up a large portion of marine capture. And because there's over thirty seven million small scale fishers around the world. So we really can't address overfishing, which you know, is a global problem, both ecologically and for all the people who really depend on the resource for their livelihood. Without also thinking about small scale fishing. This type of fishing is really diverse. It's dispersed. Landing sites can be very, can be varied. And it can be hard to track, though we've seen some initiatives of that today. And it can make typical forms of top down management such as quotas less viable. And it's really led to other forms of management trying, such as marine reserves and community based management to try and address those issues. So like I said, very briefly with marine reserves. They have been implemented as a spatial management tool. And it does not require these complex quota systems or permitting systems. And it supports fish production either through spillover when adult fish move into a fished area. Or larval transport where larva are exported out of the marine reserve into other areas. And while NPAs are celebrated for conservation, they are not necessarily silver bullet. And they can be hard to enforce. Additionally, marine reserves are not all effective. And for example, in the Philippines, they found only about ten to thirty percent are considered effective. And to go into the community based management and property rights. As we know, fish are common pool resources and can be vulnerable to overfishing. When there's a lack of this regulation. And one way we can address that is through those quotas to shift this common pool resource into more of a private resource and creating these property rights. And another way we can do that is through community based management where you're giving communities the agency to manage those resources on their own and sort of give them those same property rights. And some areas in the Philippines have implemented community based management of these marine reserves in order to increase the effectiveness of them. And sort of provides this medium between common pool and private. So my research is based on these twenty Fish Forever sites. Though I really did my interviews at the six sites in this red box up there. And they were at a location where an NGO called Rare facilitated the implementation of community based management of these NPAs in twenty fourteen. And this is a really good case study for this type of work because small scale fishing makes up fifty percent of the marine capture there. There's also a long history of community based management prior to colonization in the Philippines as well. And coastal fisheries exist in this complex social ecological system that really involves many factors that determine the success of a particular management regime. And what I was really interested in this project was documenting or understanding how social and ecological systems interact. So my previous research, this, my presentation builds on my previous research, which looked at how fish community structure changed depending on the implementation of these community based management. Managed marine reserves and found that it is structured, a community structure varied among the twenty sites. So I was really curious to know what was different among those twenty sites. That resulted in these environmental responses. And so one of those factors I was looking at was how compliance and enforcement was perceived in the Philippines. So I did this through a qualitative analysis. And I really based my definition on looking at successful or unsuccessful sites based on that previous research on if biodiversity was significantly different or not significantly different before and after community based manager, reserves were implemented. So I'm gonna go through and some of my preliminary, preliminary results from that. So I chose those four sites. I conducted thirty seven semi structured interviews with twenty two men and fifteen women in the March of this year. And used inductive and deductive thematic analysis, meaning that some, I went in with some overarching themes I was expecting. And then as the interviews went on, I also learned some emergent themes as well. Sorry about that. So my emergent themes, I went into these interviews with the intention to learn about the perceptions of marine reserves, the compliance, enforcement and community engagement. And some of the themes that emerged from the interviews were that NPAs were generally helpful. Compliance within communities was pretty high. Violations really were from outsiders and lack of knowledge. Education campaigns were also very useful. Respect and trust in the Bantadagat, which I'll go into later as well. And then challenges in fisheries were external. So I'm going to share some quotes. And at all the sites, regardless if they viewed catch as declining or increasing, fishers viewed marine reserves as helpful. They intimately understood the potential ecological benefits of NPAs, saying that marine sanctuaries are a big help. Because once it has been protected by fishermen, all fishermen are the ones who are benefited when fish are bigger and go to the outside of the reserves. Some also spoke about spill over directly and that the NPAs can serve as spawning grounds for fish. Additionally, fishers and community members believe that people with, people complied with the rules. And at least they think that they complied with the, like those within their own communities complied with the rules. If only asked about compliance, such as are the rules generally followed? They would simply respond with everyone follows the rules. But such as this fisher who said that here in Taosan, fishers follow the rules, regulations and policies about fishing management and law in Taosan. But when probed a little bit more, I learned that often violations were occurring seemingly from fishers outside of their community. Fishers from other brown guys and the upland brown guys, they will come and fish depending on the season. They come every night. And sometimes these fishers were from these neighboring communities who were not permitted to fish in the municipal waters of these sites, or they were fishing within the marine reserves themselves. And sometimes these fishers were also using illegal gear such as scuba spearfishing or poisons. Education campaigns were also praised repeatedly as a reason fishers understood and respected the rules and helped further protect the marine sanctuary. So in the beginning, it was hard to implement these rules, but we continue and to continue to educate the fishermen to help protect and monitor the sanctuary. And you heard things like this often. And particularly in these successful sites that I visited. Alternatively, some violations were occurring from people either local or transient who did not know the regulations. Those violators are fishermen who don't know the rules. Most of them are teenagers or young ones. This indicates that there's a need for further information campaigns or education more broadly within communities and more cooperation with outside communities. This type of information, these types of quotes were definitely more present in the sites that had less biodiversity after those community based managed marine reserves were implemented. So there was a pretty distinct difference in the role of education and knowledge transfer between those two sites. And then similar to those outside fishermen being the primary violators, if there were negative perceptions about fish catch. For example, they thought fish catch was declining. Many of the reasons for that decline were due to external reasons external to the community. So a major cause of concern, especially in March twenty twenty two, was the recent typhoon Odette, which occurred, I think in December twenty twenty one. It made a direct hit to the communities that I was interviewing in. And it caused a lot of, you know, mass devastation, both in terms of human lives lost and ecosystems. It was about the equivalent of a category five hurricane and is the second most costly typhoon to ever hit the, ever hit the Philippines. So the community members I spoke with felt the typhoon had devastated their reefs and caused the fish to disappear. and caused the fish to disappear. And that resulted in a lot of stress amongst the fishers. And they wanted to know more information about how that typhoon impacted the reefs and if there was a need to make changes in their fishing or protection, protected areas to account for the damage. In addition to the typhoon, other factors I felt impacted the fisheries were garbage, other pollution, climate change, and political corruption. So did I go the wrong way? Sorry about that if I have not been changing my slides. So my next steps and some lessons learned are to dig deeper into these data, these data and themes and parse out which themes occur and which category of site and determine the differences of perceptions between them. And as a brief example, both groups had positive perceptions of NPAs. However, violations from lack of knowledge was more common and unsuccessful versus successful as opposed to violations from outsiders in successful sites. The role of knowledge transfer, like I just said, was different in these two types of sites as well. Where one praised education campaigns for the reasons the rules were followed. And going further to understand these social networks amongst fishers and how information is formally, formally or informally transferred through communities would be the next direction to go in and something that can be done in any fishing community who wants to know how to best disseminate new policies or influence social norms. And these perceived differences can provide insight into the levels of enforcement and compliance of these community-based managed marine reserves and act as a proxy for true compliance and effectiveness in marine reserves and areas that might be otherwise difficult to gather this type of information because of this dispersive nature of the fishery. So with that, I want to say thank you and offer any questions. I want to specifically thank my co-authors, my variety of funders, partners of the Philippines and RARE specifically, want to dedicate this to Lito, who without, I would not have been able to do any of my research there this year. And most importantly, I want to thank the fishers and community members who took the time to sit down with me and tell me their stories. So, thanks.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Sarah. So Sarah will be here for the rest of the conference. So please track her down if you have any questions about how to work in the Philippines could be transferred here to our region. Thank you very much, Sarah. And so next up, we'll go from the Philippines to Turks and Caicos, where Martha will talk to us about blue justice. So Martha, and just a reminder to our presenters, you officially have twelve minutes to present and three minutes for questions. If you would like to use the full fifteen minutes, you're fine, but you just won't have any questions. So the decision is yours.
Good afternoon. It is great to be back at the GCFI after a few years away. And this is actually the first time that I'm presenting on Bial for Fisher Folk First, which is a small NGO that I set up in the Turks and Caicos Islands to empower the fishing communities and to strive for blue justice. The clicker is not working, or maybe I'm not good with technology. Here we go. My talk today is based on a book chapter that we wrote as part of the To Big To Know Blue Justice Initiative. The book is entitled, Blue Justice: Small-Scale Fisheries in a Sustainable Ocean Economy, and it was published only this year. And it includes seventy case studies from fishing communities around the world. So what do we mean by blue justice? Blue justice is a relatively new concept that arose in response to the burgeoning growth of the blue economy. Blue justice addresses threats to livelihoods, rights, and traditions of coastal communities and fisher folk. And for this reason, it is particularly relevant for small island nations and also for the international year of artisanal fisheries and aquaculture. Our chapter in this book assesses the blue justice issues facing the small-scale fisheries in the Turks and Caicos Islands, small island nations, and UK overseas territory in the wider Caribbean region. Small-scale fisheries were once the bedrock of the economy in Turks and Caicos. In the nineteen seventies, the country had a population of under six thousand people who were mostly dependent on small-scale fisheries. Since the rise of tourism in the nineteen eighties, Turks and Caicos has undergone a major transformation. It has become a premier luxury tourist destination and a center for offshore finance. It experienced some of the highest rates of economic growth in the world. And its population increased by over seven hundred percent. Being a tax haven and providing other incentives to look to foreign investors fueled this growth. But at the same time, it created enormous socioeconomic divisions. Revenue for the Turks and Caicos government comes from import taxes and pretty much all goods are imported. This regressive system disproportionately impacts people with lower incomes while benefiting foreign investors and affluent residents. Consumer prices are extremely high and Turks and Caicos, sorry, consumer prices are extremely high and Turks and Caicos is one of the highest cost of living in the world. But the minimum wage still remained at six dollars twenty-five per hour. This socioeconomic context poses major challenges for the fishing industry. And fisher folk are struggling to stay afloat in this tax haven. From a position of sustaining the economy in the nineteen seventies, fisheries now contribute to less than zero point five percent of the country's GDP. Tourism is paramount. Small-scale fisheries are marginalized and are widely considered to be a relic from the country's past. The fishing industry in Turks and Caicos is based on a multi-species, multi-gear complex and mainly relies on freediving fishers. The fleet, the fishing methods, and work conditions have not marginalized, have not modernized substantially for over fifty years. Since the nineteen fifties, the main focus of the fisheries has been spiny lobster and queen conch for export, mainly to the US. There is also a growing local market for reef fishes that is largely driven by tourism. The number of commercially licensed fishers is fluid, but less than two hundred can be considered full-time fishers. And all fishers switch between species according to market demands, resource abundance, and closed season. But mostly, they target what the processing plants demand as these plants dominate the industry and dictate ex-vessel prices. These prices have stagnated for years at around three dollars fifty per pound for raw lobster and one dollar fifty per pound for unprocessed conch meat. Fishers and fish workers are often tied to processing plants and cannot access different markets or negotiate prices. It is hard for local fishers to compete with cheap imported seafood and remain economically viable. But at the same time, it is hard for processing plants to compete internationally without keeping ex-vessel prices and wages low. So fisher folks suffer and their livelihoods are threatened. Women participate in fisheries, mostly in post-harvest activities, working in processing plants, cleaning seafood by hand. In the past, cleaning seafood professionally was a job undertaken by Turks and Caicos Island women. But now this role is filled almost exclusively by low immigrant, low-paid immigrant women from Haiti. For immigrant workers, pay is seasonal and unreliable. They are paid by the quantity of food, seafood they land or clean. And effectively, they have no income during periods of low landings. For example, during bad weather or closed seasons. On top of that, their work permits do not allow them to seek legal employment elsewhere. Small-scale fisheries in the Turks and Caicos face numerous blue justice issues, many of which are rooted in broader systemic problems affecting the countries that I mentioned before. Injustice also results from poor governance, which is almost inevitable for a country of less than fifty thousand people. Turks and Caicos have a relatively large exclusive economic zone, but fisheries management and enforcement are critically under-resourced. Regulations are outdated and often mismatch the realities of the fisheries. Fisher folk have a little voice in the governance of their industry, which is further diminished by an absence of fisher folk organizations and a general lack of unity and trust among fishers. Consultation processes exist, but they are biased towards stakeholders who are literate, speak English, have access to online resources, have the time and inclination to attend public meetings, and have the confidence to contribute in public forum. As a consequence, the opinions and concerns of fisher folk can be drawn out by those of other stakeholders who are better able to engage in the process. Tourism and conservation of biodiversity are prioritized at expense of fisheries. As a result, fisheries have lost traditional fishing grounds to a network of marine-protected areas that you can see in red on the map. These NPAs ban fishing in approximately fifty percent of the coastline around the main islands. Blue growth is likely to further encroach upon fishing grounds and exacerbate the pressure on fishing docks and landing areas which are already feeling the effects of gentrification. So in order to look at the situation more systematically, we group the most prominent areas of injustice into six categories that you can see on the x-axis below. These are marginalization, labor and safety, livelihoods, access to markets, voice in their industry, and access to space, which includes fishing grounds, docks, landing sites, and also areas to process, store, and sell catch. We look at how these blue justice issues affect small-scale fishery stakeholders differently. We divided stakeholders into owners and boats and owners of boats and businesses versus fishers and employees. The latter group was further divided into Turks and Caicos islanders versus immigrants. We also look at various types of fishing, commercial, recreational, and subsistence. We also assess the post-harvest activities. Gray means that the issue is not applicable to that particular group of stakeholders. Blue is negligible, yellow is low, and darker, the red, the more severe the issue is. If we look at owners of boats and businesses first, we can see that voice and space are severe issues for those engaging in commercial fishing. While things are less problematic for owners of processing plants and middlemen. If we move to the fishers and employees column, starting with the Turks and Caicos islanders, we can see that the range and severity of issues increases for both those engaged in fishing and those engaged in post-harvest activities. When we look at immigrant fishers and employees, the situation is quite alarming. Immigrant fishers and fish workers are very marginalized and often face discrimination. They have numerous labor and safety issues, are unable to exercise their rights, have limited livelihood security, almost no access to markets, and they have very little voice in their industry, with immigrant women effectively having no voice at all. So in their current forms, small-scale fisheries will increasingly struggle to provide decent livelihoods in the Turks and Caicos. So what can we do to improve blue justice and allow fisher folk to benefit more from the country's growth and economic development? Implementing the FAO's Small-Scale Fisheries Guideline and tailoring consultation processes to be more inclusive and embedding formal roles for women and immigrant workers will ensure fisher folk voices are heard in decision-making. Establishing fishing corporates and other civil society organizations could further empower fisher folk. To improve livelihoods, fishers can develop value-added markets specifically targeting luxury tourism. And this includes emphasizing fresh locally-coated, high-quality, traceable, and stored seafood, adopting seafood certification programs, and diversifying fishing methods and species targeted. Fishers may also need to embrace tourism more directly, working as tour guides or elsewhere in the industry. Unfortunately, as the Turks and Caicos embrace blue growth, securing an equitable role for small-scale fisheries in the blue economy will become increasingly challenging. Thank you, and a special thanks to the wonderful fishing community of the Turks and Caicos Islands.
All right. Thank you very much, Martha. We have time for questions for Martha. Any questions? Yes, we have one.
Firstly, thank you for your presentation. It was very informative. In the Bahamas, we have marine-protected areas and it's somewhat of a contentious issue in terms of management. So I wanted to understand in Turks and Caicos, marine-protected areas, are there, is there formal management or designation of which agency or things like that? Who operates their enforcement and management of those areas?
So first of all, it's like when you say that you struggle to, you know, in the, in the Bahamas, in Turks and Caicos, we look up at the Bahamas, you know, but so there is a fisheries, marine-protected areas is part of like the environmental resources, like agents in the government. Recently, it was split into marine-protected areas and fisheries. But one of the issue that we are having is lack of funding for enforcement. And you can see, you know, in the map, that is quite, quite a big area. And so like, it's really hard to enforce if there is no, like, in the money for fuel to cover such a, such a big area. Also, enforcement is a problem also in the fishing, at the fishing docks because there are some fishing docks, but like also a lot of smaller landing sites here and there. So usually, most of the enforcement happens by the processing plants. So it's hard to, there is a bigger picture with a lot of like other little situation and it's really hard to manage.
Yes. So I just want to say it would be great to have a conversation off because I have a lot more questions, but I just wanted about the management. And I like the fact that your research captured how the fisher folk felt or how they're being affected by these decisions. So thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Awesome. So please, Martha will be here for the rest of the week. So please contact Martha during the coffee break or get dinner with Martha or lunch with Martha to talk more about blue justice in Turks and Caicos.
You're setting me up for a day.
Thank you very much, Martha, for your presentation. And so next we will go virtual where Delilah will talk to us about the impacts and incidents of COVID-19 on fishing communities in the Caribbean.
A continuación presentaremos el trabajo titulado incidencia e impactos de la contaminación plástica derivada de la pandemia del SARS-Cov-2 en el Caribe y en la actividad pesquera. Esta es una colaboración con el Caribbean Fisher Management Council. La propagación de COVID-19 ha afectado significativamente la salud humana, la economía de los países y la rutina diaria de la vida humana. En la región caribeña, la pesca es una importante actividad económica, generadora de empleo e ingresos para las familias de la región. El sector pesquero cuenta con más de cien El sector pesquero cuenta con más de ciento de mil pescadores. América Latina y el Caribe tuvieron en 2020 el 20% de los casos reportados de COVID. Actualmente, en 2022, se reportan 12.18% de los casos perú. La pandemia de COVID-19 ha provocado un aumento en el consumo de plásticos nosólogos, la mayoría producto de las necesidades de salud e higiene. Para controlar la propagación del virus, el cubrebocas se utiliza como el equipo de protección personal privado, por lo cual la producción y el uso de las mascarillas aumentaron significativamente en la pandemia. Se ha visto un aumento exponencial en el uso de las mascarillas, los guantes, las pollas desechables de limpieza, y empaques para alimentos. Sumado a estos empaques, en ocasiones excesivos, de las compras por internet y de comida rápida. Los objetivos de este estudio fueron realizar encuestas en línea para indicar los tipos de plásticos de pandemia, la duración y el método de eliminación que se emplean actualmente en la actividad pesquera, además de analizar la presencia de estos plásticos en las capturas, en las artes de pesca y/o en los hábitos de las principales especies pesqueras del Caribe. Esta encuesta contó con cinco temas principales que fueron: efecto de la pandemia en la salud, modificación de los hábitos de consumo por efecto de la pandemia, contaminación del ambiente marino por plásticos derivados de la pandemia, la modificación de la captura pesquera, la modificación del mercadeo de productos pesqueros. Esta encuesta se implementó en los formularios Google y fue enviada por correo electrónico y por WhatsApp. La aplicación de WhatsApp contó con monitor y sin monitor es muestreo tipo bola de nieve. En este estudio participaron sesenta y cuatro personas, de las cuales sesenta y uno son pescadores, dos permisionarias, y un técnico pesquero. Los principales países que colaboraron fueron Belice, Jamaica, México, Panamá, República Dominicana, Islas de San Andrés, y Providencia y Colombia. Los participantes de Belice y de República Dominicana contestaron esta encuesta mediante un monitor en formato de papel, mientras que los de México, San Andrés, y Providencia lo hicieron con apoyo de un monitor, pero en formato online con los formularios Google y vía WhatsApp. Los participantes de Jamaica y Panamá respondieron la encuesta vía WhatsApp sin monitor en un tipo de muestreo de texto bola de nieve. El rango de edad de los pescadores fue de quince como mínimo y sesenta y cuatro años como máximo. Los pescadores entre cuarenta y seis y sesenta años conforman el cincuenta por, cincuenta y siete por ciento de los pescadores encuestados. Pasamos al primer tema, que es el efecto de la pandemia en la salud de los pescadores. De los pescadores contagiados por COVID-19, el cincuenta por ciento señaló que había adquirido el COVID. El once por ciento menciona que tal vez estuvo en cero. En la distribución por países, el cien por ciento de los pescadores de República Dominicana adquirieron el virus, seguidos por Panamá con el sesenta por ciento, Belice el cuarenta y dos por ciento, Jamaica veinticinco por ciento, México cincuenta y cuatro por ciento, y San Andrés y Providencia con el dieciocho por ciento. En el análisis general, el cincuenta y dos por ciento de los pescadores cuenta con seguridad social, pero en el análisis por país se observa que en Jamaica, México, y Panamá, arriba del ochenta por ciento de los pescadores no cuenta con seguridad social, mientras que en Belice y República Dominicana el noventa por ciento sí cuenta con este beneficio. En general, en cada país más del setenta por ciento de los pescadores cuenta con el esquema de vacunación. Belice, Panamá, y República Dominicana cuentan con el cien por ciento de pescadores vacunados, mientras que en México, Jamaica, y las Islas de San Andrés y Providencia faltan de vacuna entre el veinte y treinta por ciento. Los pescadores de República Dominicana fueron los que más invirtieron en artículos de protección para prevenir los contagios, con un promedio de ciento treinta y siete dólares. En el resto de los países se gastaron menos de veinticinco dólares. El gasto realizado en medicamentos fue de punto cuarenta y cuatro dólares hasta doscientos setenta y ocho dólares. Los que más compraron fueron los pescadores de República Dominicana, con un promedio de ciento veintiséis dólares. Los demás países gastaron alrededor de cincuenta dólares o menos en medicamentos. Iniciamos con el primer tema importante, es modificación de los hábitos de consumo por efecto de la pandemia. And the first is, the foods that stopped eating were stuffed, desserts, refreshments, meats, food fast, chowder. The most important things they stopped eating were proteins, all types of meats, meat of fish, meat of pork. And we also note that the eighteen percent mentions not having done any change in their diet. In the six countries that we interviewed, mainly the meats and their derivatives, red meat, pork, and beef. In República Dominicana and the islands of San Andrés, it was found that the largest number of pescadores did not make changes in their diet. The objects or personal items that most stopped buying by pescadores during the pandemic were clothes and shoes. The thirty percent of them said that they did not stop buying any personal income. The packaging of the purchases became a problem in many places. In this case, the sixty-seven percent of the pescadores did not mention anything because they didn't buy. The thirty-three percent left says that it was in a basket, either in a plastic bag, in a bin of trash, in the bin of trash. Some say only that they threw it in the basket. Our second point is the contamination of the marine environment by plastics derived from pandemia. With respect to the fishing activity and the plastics observed in the sea, eighty-three percent of the pescadores indicated not seeing plastics in the area they went to fish and were observed between three and seven times a week. The plastics of pandemia were observed by seventy-two percent every day of the week, while the twenty-five percent observed these plastics of pandemia in the capture and also the twenty-five percent observed in some marine organisms. The eighty-three percent of the pescadores observed the plastics in the sea, indicated not seeing plastics in the area they went to fish. All the pescadores indicated not finding plastics in their fishing days. In Jamaica, the one percent of them observed them. And above the eighty percent of the pescadores of Belice, Panama, República Dominicana, and the islands of San Andrés and Providencia, they observed them. In Mexico, only the sixty-seven percent of the pescadores observed them. Eighty-one percent of these pescadores said that the capture did not affect the plastics of pandemia, while the rest said different types of effectation in extraction, such as damage to the trypsites, the ones trapped by organisms, the ones these organisms swallow, that the nets are stained with these plastics, and that they contaminate naturally. The use of articles to prevent COVID-19 activities such as fishing is complicated. Generally, they limit the cover boxes. And in this case, the sixty-nine percent of the pescadores interviewed said not to use it while working. The articles of protection used by the pescadores were designed for the trash bags, some in the trash bags they carried in the recreation or in the bin of trash they found when they came to the port. In the modification of the fishing activity by effect of the pandemic, it was observed that this fishing, that the capture did not reflect a higher capture according to the eighty-six percent of the pescadores, while the fifty-eight percent says that indeed there has been a lower capture of marine organisms. In each country, there were different types of restrictions to contain the pandemic caused by COVID-19. Eighty-nine percent says that indeed there were restrictions of mobility. The sixty-seven percent of the fishermen says that indeed there was a modification in the number of companions for the embarkment and the days in which they could go out to fish, also was variable. The amounts of fishing for the fish. Seventy-two percent of the fishermen says that the shops had been opened for both either for buying fish or ice cream, for buying gasoline, belts, chains, nets, and only ninety percent of the fishermen of República Dominicana says that these shops were closed. Entering the modification of the fishing market for the products of the pandemic. Seventy percent of the fishermen said a decrease in demand of fish, scum, angus, poth, and bream. The category of fishing groups is grouped. We group the scum, amber, tuba, boquinete, cordina, the whole fish and the fillets. The fourteen percent of the fishermen said that the decrease in demand of these species should be in the market and closed, and that to those who had products, they could not sell. The same way, the five percent said that it should be the variability of the prices. The products normally went up in price. The sixty-seven percent says that the distribution of fishing products was affected and had some consequences, such as the transport of the products, the ports closed, the international market closed, there was no sale, the low price, insufficient products, hotels and restaurants closed, limited mobility, the distribution mainly was affected by the lack of inventory of the products, the restriction of mobility and the shortage of transport of products. In summary, these results can see that the fishermen were strongly impacted by the pandemic. The age, inconsistency in work, and lack of social security damaged the family economy in the case of, in the case of their illness. Fifty percent of the fishermen said that they were infected by COVID and the sixty-three percent of their relatives and the seventy percent of their colleagues too. The sector stopped working for three months to a year and a half. The cost of medicines and products of protection in the populations of great contagion went up to two hundred and thirty-eight dollars in the median and a maximum of two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. The nutrition was modified, mainly avoiding animal protein, the meats. The most expensive product of the food supply, the same way, they stopped buying shoes and main clothes. No program for the destruction of the packaging, either for food fast or online purchases. The sea is receiving the plastics of pandemia. In some cases, they have been caught in the capture and others in the organisms. There is no specific protocol for these plastics. Only they are put in bags of plastics deposited in bins of trash in the port of Arim. During the pandemic, no more capture was reflected, indicating that the number of days for fishing was reduced, as well as the number of companions, which in some cases connect to the access of fishing amounts. There was a decrease in demand of marine products due to no sale and the increase in prices. The distribution of fishing products was affected by the pandemic due to the restrictions of movement and transport, the ports closed, the international market closed, the lack of inventory of products, and its low price, along with the shortage of products and water. Thank you for your attention and collaboration.
Alright, thank you very much, Delilah. So Delilah is here with us virtually, so if anyone has any questions for her, please let us know and we can pull her up if there are any questions. Any questions for Delilah? Going once for Delilah, going twice for Delilah. Alright, thank you very much, Delilah, for your presentation. And next up, we will continue on with COVID and we've just heard about the impacts of COVID-19 on Caribbean fisheries. Ingrid will now talk to us about how they have bridged the gap that COVID-19 has created. And so Ingrid will talk to us about bridging the gap on the impact of COVID-19 in Jamaica.
I think for the slides to come up, it is after lunch, so, you know, a little while for you to stand up and move around a little bit while I am still waiting. Okay, so why they do that? My name is Ingrid Parchment. I'm Executive Director of the Caribbean Coastal Area Management Foundation in Jamaica. Can you go back a little? Right, so it is my pleasure to be here this evening or this afternoon. I'm talking specifically about a project called implementing a bioparma action component grant, and this was used to bridge the gap that we had in terms of COVID-19 impacts. Ahead of the organization, as I said, called Caribbean Coastal Area Management Foundation. We were established in nineteen ninety-eight as a not-for-profit charity. We have three offices in Jamaica. We are mostly in central South Jamaica, for those who might know the area. And that gives you a picture. It's the largest protected area in Jamaica, so it's both terrestrial and marine. This really does a little bit more about the area, but within the area, there are three special fishery conservation areas or fish sanctuaries, gallon harbor, salt harbor, and three bays. And we manage these in partnership with the National Fisheries Authority. We also have Ramsar sites within Portland Bay, and that was the third Ramsar site to have been declared in Jamaica, and this is Marine. So it's the Keys, the Portland Bay, and Keys area that were declared. We do a number of things, but mostly we manage a protected area, but we do this through partnership. We do wetlands management, fisheries management, climate change, a number of things. But we mostly promote sustainable livelihoods and climate change adaptation. So how are we funded? And this is important because I talk about the gap that we had as a result of COVID-19. So we do receive two government subventions. One from the Natural Resources Conservation Authority to manage the overall area, to support the management of the overall area, because that would suggest that they're covering all the costs, and they're not. We also rely on donor funds, so we apply to cause for proposals, Bioparma USA, Critical ecosystems partnership fund, it seems like we're doing that all the time. We also have small revenue that we get from some of our operations. We do have an educational and recreational facility, and anybody who's in Jamaica, I invite you to come down and enjoy that facility. It's in the wetlands. It would be a great experience. In terms of the impacts of COVID-19, we had, as I had said before, we had two subventions. The Natural Resources and Conservation Authority reduced our funding by thirty percent in 2020. This went directly to salaries. So persons had to know we're working three days instead of four days, and therefore their salaries were cut. The idea was that either we closed or we look at how it is that we could deal with that. And so as a staff, we sat together and we discussed it. I didn't make this decision. We said, what are the options? And we were told on the twentieth of the month, that come the first of the next month, this is the cut. So there was no time to plan to get some other funding. And I think the staff was sufficiently committed to the work that we're doing, so they agreed that for a short time, they would take a cutting salary, assuming that we're going to be looking and receiving other funds to do this. So we maintained all our staff during that period, which was really hard because people are going through a mental challenge. They still have the expenses that they have. All of that is still going on and they're working. However, it wasn't just the money from NRCA. As I said, we operate the Portland Bay Discovery Center, and that is meant to bring in some revenue to our operations, and we also operate a cyber center. However, because of the impact of COVID-19, we had lockdowns. However, because of the impact of COVID-19, we had lockdowns, schools were out. So the visitors that would have come to the center, the persons who might use the cyber center as well, we didn't have those numbers. So that was additional loss of income. Additionally, some of the donors that would normally be supporting the work that we're doing, because of the impact of COVID-19, they shifted their focus, which was necessary. You know, the government offered funding to other entities. NGOs didn't get any of that funding. Even fishermen suffered because the fishermen did not get a kind of support in a timely manner. So we looked around to see who it is that we're focused on this. And Bioparma had this small grant, fifty thousand dollars, and that may not seem like much, but when you have nothing, you make it work. So from February twenty twenty-one to February twenty twenty-two, they provided us with a grant to bridge some of the gap that we had. I want to say that, you know, shout out to my team members if you're listening, because honestly, if we didn't have the team, we could not have done the work that we did. Because even though there was a funding gap, we continued to do all the work that we're doing during the period. And as you can see from this photograph, they're doing bird banding, they are rescuing wildlife, they're including crocodiles, which they're measuring and relocating, and they're doing mangrove restoration. All of that continues throughout the period. Where there were lockdowns and police was there, they went to the police and said, listen, we have important work to do, we need to go through. Do you have an ID? Well, yes, this is my ID to say who I am and I work. You can call this lady and she will verify. I didn't even know this was happening. They were going to work, they were going out on the boats. I mean, yeah, can I say enough about that? We continued our work on artificial reefs and coral nurseries. We continued monitoring enforcement. Now, we talk a lot about the fact that when we have sanctuaries, sometimes you find that monitoring and enforcement is difficult. Enforcement in particular. One of the things that we have found out for the three centers that we manage is that the same persons are the ones who are going to the sanctuary. They don't change. They get arrested, they get charged, the gear is stolen, they get a different boat and come back out. So by and large, they're just one or two persons that are causing the challenges. The others are on board with it, they're advocates for it, they're asking us for more. The Bioparma Project also assisted us with upgrading our field station. And this field station was built with grant funds that we had. We actually retrofitted some containers into the field station, but we needed a new refrigerator, the bathroom, you know how it is when you have buildings. And most grants don't give you money for maintenance and upgrading. They want to start from scratch. Bioparma allowed us to do this. We also were able to install some signs, both for our buildings as well as crocodile warning signs. What more importantly, we were able to do a financial audit. Organizations that do have financial audit have challenges getting funding. So the fact that they allowed funding to do that where we were without was very important. We also were able to start the upgrading of our strategic plan, but also develop a funding plan. And that's particularly critical because this funding plan is what is going to help us going forward. We have a trust and the funding plan is saying we need to operationalize the trust and get some money in, talking about, you know, some of the things that we want to do, and it has formed a basis of funding that we have gotten since that time because we have the funding plan. As in every good project, there are sometimes challenges. So even though the project or the funds were supposed to help with the impact from COVID-19, it started three months later than we had anticipated based on the discussions we're having. Also, we should have been receiving reimbursement for monies that we spent. Those monies came in late. So we still had to find additional money to advance while we were waiting on the donor funds. That's very difficult for an NGO. I don't think I have to tell anybody that because it means you add money and the money that you earn, money that you can't afford, you have to put it in there because people work, they have to get paid. Am I talking battle? No, talking English. You know, sometimes I switch over, I have to ask myself to remind myself of that. Yeah. You know, and of course, there are the continued impacts of COVID-19. One of our staff got COVID, so for a week we had to close down. He had to be on a boat waiting, well, a yacht really. Waiting to get better. We had to clean the facility. We didn't have any money for this, so we had to go again and be creative and find money to be able to do this. Government didn't offer us any money. And unfortunately, even the staff member, because he was quarantined on a boat, there were other boats nearby. And actually, somebody was very abusive to him because they were saying he brought COVID into the space, and that was really awful. And you know, you had to be talking to everybody every day. How are you dealing with it? How are you coping mentally? Because these are persons with families, you're coming to work in a mask the whole day. You know, are you going to be taken? Is a vaccine going to happen? Are we going to get it in Jamaica? Is COVID-19 going to work? All of those questions. And as Executive Director, this is something that I have to have ongoing discussions with your staff about, without making it heavy. Because you don't want to make bad words, right? But as I said, there are some major achievements. The fact that we're able to continue to do the patrolling, that's a big win. The fact that we're able to build new partnerships as we're implementing this project, that was important. We're able to train staff and community persons, and believe me, that is a big plus. Because of COVID, I think we got into the use of more technology. That was a challenge for some community persons, but we managed to make space in our office, moved all of the desks and chairs out, created space where people could be safely seated, provided through ceremonies we were able to provide, and this is to support this. And we were able to supply tablets to some of the community representatives that they were able to be on as well. So that was a plus and again, an addition. Again, a beautiful picture from Jamaica. Thank you. I finish quick. I finish early.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you very much, Ingrid. Any questions for Ingrid? Yes.
Miss Ingrid, thank you for this presentation. As a protected areas manager, it's much appreciated because I don't think people know the mental strain of saying to your staff, I have to cut you by twenty percent, I have to cut you by fifty percent. You have to be deployed for a month at a time. So I really appreciate this. I think, you know, it's something that we have to discuss. So I invite you to Belize because we're doing a blended finance approach to create predictable funds for management of protected areas. Because a lot of, nobody wants to pay for the people to do the work, so we have a lot of project funds, but nobody to do the work. Right? And so, you know, you know, I just wanted to congratulate you on, for surviving, first of all. And yes, the use of technology is important, but I just wanted your view on, on the one thing that you would advise donors and partners that we need as protected areas managers, and in your case, even more critical because you're working with communities as well that don't traditionally have access to technology or internet or that kind of stuff. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And can I tell you, I'm actually writing a project and I suggested Belize as the country that we should do an exchange with. Persons from San Andreas reached out to me, so we're planning to go there next year. But I also suggested that Belize is one of those. We are using smart technology with community members, hence Belize. You know, what I want to say to donors is that they need to listen to us. And these short-term projects for a year, six months, two years, sorry. And, and it is not enough. I mean, yes, I appreciate that maybe what you have, but it really sets you up for failure almost. And I think we should have no project that lasts less than five years, and it should be fully funded. That, you know, they should allow us first, a small grant, have a discussion with our stakeholders so we can get from them what it is that is most critical. And then we need to look at how it is that we implement that in partnership.
They face the same challenges throughout the region. And what I wanted to, you know, because like in Belize, as Valdemir pointed out, I see in our region where these mega companies are using the resources. Beautiful waters, pristine beaches, the cruise industry and so forth, so forth. And, you know, if somebody visits Alaska, there's a user fee.
Yeah.
And yet, in the Caribbean, we have not collected the first dollar. And there's always this struggle about resources for things that are so important. And it puts a lot of pressure on people like you and Valdemir. Same scenario in the Bahamas. And we say we're committed to conservation, but yet you always the excuse. You know, you're underfunded and supported. So I just want to encourage you. I think collectively, what Valdemir pointed out, we need to address these issues because there's the exploitation of companies from all over the world using the resources. And at the end of the day, I can tell you in the Bahamas, there's over fifty thousand yards fishing in our waters. We have not collected the first dollar in environmental fee. One of the largest cruise ship ports, we have not collected the first dollar. The problem in the Caribbean is not, the funding isn't there. It's just, we need the will to stand up to the exploitation so that persons like you and others can have the resources to do the important work, continue even under extreme circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you so much. One. It's interesting, there, there, one of our sanctuary partners just had a launch of a project over in Saint Mary, Arcabeuse Bay Foundation, and a minister was there, and USAID is the funder. And the minister indicated that he thought that all of the sanctuaries should be funded, we should get, you know, all of this. And I'm saying, I want the Minister of Finance to say that. I want the Finance Minister of Finance to put that money in. I think I'm right in saying that our governments need to stop paying lip service and signing agreements and not putting the money behind what is needed to implement that. I mean, as I said, we're in partnership with NFA, National Fisheries Authority, for what that's worth. Not, you know, and I think there are monies that are being collected by some of the persons that are utilizing the natural resources, but it's not going back to the benefits, certainly not of the people on the ground. Artisanal fishers are poor. They are in abject poverty, while a man comes with a yacht and he's rich. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Ingrid. So Ingrid will be here all week. I work with Ingrid, so I encourage you to, she's a wealth of knowledge, wealth of experience. So please have dinner, have lunch, have coffee with Ingrid. A wealth of, a wealth of knowledge and experience. So we will move on now to Will, and Will will talk to us about the Gladden Memorial Award and honoring the champions from the Gladden Memorial Award. So all you want.
Good afternoon. Thanks for being here. It's wonderful to be back in person. Great to see old friends and new. So I am going to give a quick talk on the Gladding Memorial Awards. This is something that's been in place for, do I get, oh, I changed slides like this? Okay. Thanks. This one this way. Yeah, nearly two decades of awarding champions like the IAFA champions, conservation leaders representing artisanal fisheries and, and really moving conservation forward. So, you know, Peter Gladding was a commercial handline fisherman in the Florida Keys. Kind of a, a real conservation leader and, and a leader in his community. I mean, he was a fisherman that was larger than life. People would come to him, ask questions. He was always catching more fish than people, but always very generous with information with younger fishers, et cetera. And very, fish very carefully with a handline when other people were getting bigger boats, bigger engines, bigger gear. Peter stuck with the handline, made sure every fish he caught was properly iced, really making sure that that resource was well taken care of. In, he died in two thousand and three and in two thousand and four, GCFI with leadership from Ken Lindeman, who was around at the time, and Don, supported the idea of giving a Gladding Memorial Award to those, that fisher each year who demonstrated the kind of conservation ethic that, that Peter had. And, you know, not only was he, all right, so I'm going to go to the next one. So like I said, I mean, when we saw that this international year of artisanal fisheries and aquaculture was coming around, we said, wow, that's, that's very similar in terms of what the Gladding Award has been recognizing and trying to lift up for twenty years. So we're super supportive of, of that and saw a lot of linkages. So we're, we're glad to be linking this session with the next session that's happening as well. So. The, Peter himself, as I said, was, you know, one of his major contributions. As I said, he's fishing with a handline and with this amazing knowledge of, of the resource and where the fish were. When it came to the Florida Keys National Marine Sanctuary, trying to figure out what to do and where to put this reserve, it was Peter that used to fish this multi-species spawning site with groupers and snappers all through the year, particularly mutton snappers. Knew where this place was, knew how important it was, and the National Marine Sanctuary wasn't sure what to do. He came to those meetings, Tortugas Two Thousand, and put a box around the Riley's Hump spawning area, and that became the core of, of that reserve. And the beautiful thing was, he as a leader in that community, you know, that was a fantastic fishing spot, and they were closing it down, a giant box. But as a leader in this community, if Peter said it was a good idea, people followed suit. So that went right through. And so that's the, that's the kind of, that's the kind of work he did. He also worked on fish traps and other issues. And, and that's a theme that we'll see through the fact that we've had now twenty-four winners since two thousand and four, sixteen different countries, and like Peter, not only have they made contributions in one area, multiple areas typically, these, these fishers have, have, have really contributed. So one of the things that we've done recently, what we're trying to do is, you know, recognize, try, try to understand who these winners are, where they came from, and what kinds of things they've done. So we're doing a little bit of analysis on the existing information, and this is just a quick look. You know, dividing up the area from Insular Caribbean, Continental Caribbean, and US Bermuda as a separate category. But you can see an incredible spread of winners across the region. You can also see that many people were involved with all kinds of different activities, and many of them were involved in multiple activities. So fisher exchanges, marine protected areas activities, like you see, regional fisheries management policies, working with the, the national level, with the, with the regional fisheries management, very active in terms of policy, community outreach and education. Marine debris, addressing issues of marine debris, real leadership in, in those areas. Cooperative research has been enormous. Most of the winners have been involved in various aspects of cooperative research. Development of sustainable gear and interesting, sometimes legal actions when it needed to take place, they've taken on some authorities. And so the other thing is, you know, many of the leaders, every leader obviously has, has played a major role in their own community, in their own area. But at the same time, many have played a role at the national level and, and what we're seeing at the international level. So this is just a, a little scratch into the data. We're looking more into it. We're going to try to put a, a paper together for, for marine policy, just to show the importance of this and to, to the larger community and the value of these, of these people and of this. This is support for these guys that are, these people that are so incredibly influential. Okay? So not only do they represent people from all over the region, they also represent the kinds of fisheries that we have throughout the, throughout the basin, from pelagics to invertebrates to reef fishes and, and, and everything else down the line, including aquaculture and recreational fishing as well. So we've got a, a broad sector of people from all kinds of areas as well. I'm going to give you a quick snapshot of some of these people. I'd love to go into the details on each one of them and we'd be here all night. So I'm just going to give you a quick snapshot. Scott Hickman, who just walked in the door, has been very influential in the Gulf of Mexico. I'm just going to give you a few tidbits for each of these people, but, but like I say, the resume goes on and on. So one of the things, he served as a chair of the National Marine Sanctuary, Flower Garden Banks National Marine Sanctuary for several years. And under his leadership, they expanded that reserve from three different banks on the offshore edge of the continental shelf to thirteen banks, protecting all these areas on the continental shelf. Also, really important work he's done. Also really important, uh, work he's done, uh, with the recreational fishing sector, making it sustainable, working with scientists and actually getting uh, a quota set aside for recreational fishers, uh, for higher recreational fishers, as Gary Jarvis talked about this morning, we'll learn more about. And also, uh, has taken on the US federal government in court multiple times. So, uh, and one um, on behalf of sustainable fisheries. So, uh, Don Di Maria, uh, who's also in the back here, um, and will be here through the week. One of Peter's best friends and was instrumental in making this, uh, this award come forward. He was the first award winner in two thousand and four. Uh, as many of the Gladding Memorial Award winners, um, are, uh, Don's a predator, you know, and, um, and was really good at killing lots and lots of big fish and working at spawning aggregations and, and got to a point in his life, watching the degradation and watching the kinds of things that it came out of the water and the changes in what he was seeing that was left and became a massive conservationist in terms of helping get Goliath get closed and getting protection for spawning aggregation sites. Uh, and similarly, uh, to Scott, he now is involved in lawsuits. Uh, this one for suing the, the city of Marathon for injecting sewage, uh, shallow, you know, shallow wells for sewage injection, uh, that we all know, you know, where that goes and that's not very far. So again, willingness to, to, to take that legal action uh, is pretty impressive. Eloy Cuevas, I got the benefit pleasure of working with for twenty-five years, cooperative researcher uh, with me. Um, at this point, he continues as a commercial lobster fisherman. He's also gotten into, uh, catch and release fly fishing, has trained guides all over the region, has trained other people, scientists and others, how to do, how to do science, how to do mapping, how to do all kinds of things. Um, and we work together to put together again for a spawning aggregation protection, eleven different marine reserves up and down the country of Belize that we work with, with Valdemar and all the others, uh, here in Belize to, to do that together with fishermen all throughout the country and with every organization throughout the country, uh, working collaboratively to change policy sustainable for the better. And again, with his leadership and involvement, the involvement of other fishers, that closure, um, you know, was supported by the nation because of the leadership of, of these well-respected fishers, uh, including Eloy. So Mitch Lay, uh, many of you have known and I've heard some of his legacy in some of the talks earlier. Mitch Lay helped start the, uh, Caribbean Network of Fisher Folk Organizations, uh, now representing, um, organizations all over the entire Caribbean and bringing fishers together, bringing, uh, those, those voices collectively to have more power. Uh, he's been recognized for that work, invited to Rome uh, by FAO to be a keynote speaker in two thousand and nineteen on a sustainable fisheries, um, uh, panel. Um, he's also been working with IUCN, helping them understand how to incorporate local ecological knowledge uh, in management, published thing there. Um, and has also been very involved, uh, you know, as has Patrick McConney in the early days. Taking this Gladding Memorial Award program and moving it forward, spearheading how that all, uh, moved forward. Cause it's a, it's a, it's a lot of work. So anyway, another one, Angelica Mendez from Guatemala. Uh, really powerful leader. She started this, um, network of Fisher organizations on the northern Guatemalan coast, Caribbean coast of Guatemala. Um, thirty-three different organizations, thousands and thousands of fishers represented. And they, you know, together, um, are really working towards sustainability. They had issues where, uh, shrimp fishers were, were running into gill net fishers who were running into people catching, uh, sardines. She working with, with others and all those other fisheries, getting people organized like, hey, we don't want to rip up each other's gear. We don't want to, you know, let's work more sustainably in each fishery and let's try to bring these, these, uh, these gears out of each other's way. So helping rotating, so all kinds of, all kinds of activity there. Um, whoa, went backwards. All right. So now we're, we're up to, um, pretty much the present. Uh, last year we awarded two awards, thinking we would all be, uh, together in two thousand and twenty-one uh, to share. Uh, so one of the awards went to Mimi Stafford from the Florida Keys. Um, and, um, and another just very impressive leader. She's been fishing for sponges, uh, through, um, you know, i- in the Florida Keys and fishing for, for stone crabs as well as lobster, but has been a huge supporter of conservation throughout her entire career, starting in the nineteen seventies, has always been a voice for conservation. So she's served on any number of panels. She works with Sea Grant. She serves on the, on the Florida cast, uh, the Florida Keys Sanctuary Advisory Committee, has been involved with cooperative research on water quality, on uh, sponges, on, on all kinds of fisheries issues and just has been a stalwart supporter, active in the fishing community, but a stalwart supporter of, of conservation all the way through. And so later this afternoon, uh, she will be actually given that award, uh, at the end of this afternoon session, um, at the end of the day. So, um, s- another award winner, uh, who is here with us, Prescott Smith, will, will get his award today. Uh, again, supposed to be last year, we didn't mind up getting together. So we said, you know what? Let's, uh, let's do this in person, uh, you know, this year. And so, uh, Prescott will be, um, winning an award too for his work throughout the Bahamas. Um, uh, fly fishing guide, uh, that has been adamant for conservation, helping develop, um, not only, uh, sustainable, um, uh, the fly fishing legislation, um, helping the government develop legislation that was sustainable, supporting sustainable fly fishing. Um, and, but also, um, a guide certification program so that the young guides coming up got the benefit of the training of conservation, not just how to fish, but all of that in-depth conservation uh, knowledge that came with it. And, and also as many of these winners have, was out of, it was, uh, intimately involved in the creation of a marine reserve. In this case, uh, this giant reserve on Andros Island, um, that includes, uh, over a one point five million acres of mangrove. So, um, I just want to wrap this up in my last minute here, essentially just summarizing, uh, the Gladding Award winners that we've identified, you know, similar to the IAFA winners have had tremendous impact on conservation. Uh, because of their respect in the, in the community, uh, of fishers, but also, um, uh, taking that, uh, into the conservation arena and the policy level and science. And I guess the point that I want to end with is that it's the twentieth year anniversary of this award, uh, next year. And so collectively, we want to work with winners and any other partners to try to harvest the energy that we've put in so far and that all of these people have put in so far and try to exponentially increase the impact, uh, that these people and others can have. So I guess it's a call to welcome anybody and everybody that works on these kinds of issues with these kinds of communities. Let's get together. Let's, let's be strategic. Let's see how we can ramp this up and really, uh, take that Fisher voice and that Fisher, um, ethic of conservation and bring it to the forefront of policy and management. Thanks.
So Will is going to make an announcement. Uh, if you have a quest, uh, once, once, if you have questions for Will, please see him at the banquet. That is free dinner, so you don't have to pay for it. Uh, and you can also see him, uh, at the Fisher Forum later. So Will will make a quick announcement and then please hold your questions.
So yeah, that, the announcement is indeed about that, uh, the details of the banquet this evening. Um, as soon as this session is over at six o'clock, uh, you can head back over to the hotel. We're going to have buses bringing people into Destin, Florida, um, right across the bridge. Uh, the bus holds fifty people. First bus will leave at six thirty. Uh, banquet starts, uh, pretty much as soon as you get there, uh, you will be greeted with two free drink tickets. They will have appetizers for everybody. It's a place called Bro Tula's overlooking the water, uh, that Gary Jarvis is involved with actually. So, uh, his son, we will see there as well as other fishers from town. Logistics, uh, there will be one bus taking rotating trips back and forth. So try to be there six thirty. One bus will come, wait for it. It'll come around. If you have other vehicles or want to get over there other ways, no problem. But basically from seven to nine, we shall be there, uh, enjoying dinner, et cetera. So, um, with that, I also just want to thank all our sponsors, you know, uh, for that, uh, including the restaurant itself, EDF, um, Ariel Seafood that has locally and that has donated some commercial, uh, Catch GCFI, the city of Destin and our group LGL and finally, uh, Shell. And, uh, I see Ruth just got here too. So thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Well, yes. So see Will at the banquet, please. Uh, Martha, I see your question. Please see Will at the banquet. We are running behind Martha. Uh,
It's not a question. I just wanted to convey a message from the fisherman from Providencia Island in Colombia. Because, eh, as you remember, a couple of years ago, the entire island was, were up and the two Peter Gladding Award features received a great support from the GCFI community. So they are very thankful to all of you for that support when they most needed. So with the funds that were collected through the GCFI Crown Campaign, eh, Casimiro was able to rebuild his house and Harvey was also able to build a, a room for a state entire family. So thank you GCFI for supporting the fishermen. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Martha and Will. Oh, yes. Thank you. Uh, next up, uh, Eric, uh, not me, uh, will be talking about a social ecological study, uh, about how he, uh, how his study has used, uh, uh, social and ecological data to engage, uh, fishers.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name's Eric. I'm a research scientist at the Cape Lutheran Institute in the Bahamas. Um, I've been there for about ten years. Um, most of my work over the last few years has been on fish aggregating devices, actually, uh, for my dissertation, but most recently I've been, um, working with this list of people here on the stone crab fishery. Um, and a quick heads up, uh, one of my colleagues, Candace Britton, who also happens to be my wife, uh, will have a poster up at the poster session. Um, she is the brains behind the Fisher engagement component of this work. Um, so you should definitely come out to that and ask her some more questions. So, there we go. Um, also a big shout out to John Cartwright, who's a commercial stone crabber from Aluthra, um, who was a project partner on all this work, um, ran the experiments with us, uh, donated hundreds and hundreds of crabs, uh, to us over the years. Um, and just this work really wouldn't be possible without him. So for a little background, the Florida stone crab is the target of a claw-only trap-based fishery in the Bahamas and the Southeast US and probably a couple of other places. Um, it is an emerging fishery in the Bahamas. So it's only been fished commercially for probably about fifteen or twenty years. Um, and some questions have come up around the sustainability of this fishery. It's a really interesting fishery in that, um, the claws are harvested and if the crab survives that process and it's released, then it can actually regenerate its claw claws to potentially be harvested again, or at least to keep reproducing. And so, um, this graph here is just catch data from Florida over the last thirty or so years, just over two million pounds per year. Um, we're not quite there yet in the Bahamas, but it is the third most valuable export fishery, um, in the Bahamas. And it's a, an interesting, um, market there in that we still have pretty big crabs and therefore big claws in the Bahamas, um, which fetch a really good, uh, price. So most of the product is actually exported to the US. And a lot of that market is based around the fact that we still have, um, big stone crabs with, with big claws there. And so a lot of this work actually came from conversations that we had with some stone crabbers, um, who are saying, hey, we fish in the same area year after year. Um, we take one claw, we take two claws if they're legal size, which is legal there. Um, and we don't frequently recapture crabs that have had their claws removed. So what's going on there? Are they not surviving? Do they not want to go back in the traps? So some of our first work, um, just looked at that. So in a lab setting, are crabs able to re-enter traps and do they still, are they food made motivated? Do they want to re-enter the traps after they've had their claws removed? Um, and that first project showed that generally speaking, they do at the same rate, um, re-enter traps even after claw removal. So there might be something else going on. Maybe they're, um, hunkering down if they're in a more wild type setting. Maybe there's some predation involved. Or maybe they're just not surviving the, the harvest process. Um, some work here in Florida, um, by Ryan Gandy in two thousand and sixteen, um, looked at the survival of crabs after claw harvest, um, and found that we'll round here about a third of crabs die after you take one claw off and about two thirds of claw, uh, crabs die if you take two claws off. Now that number can go higher with either higher temperatures or if a bad break occurs. So like in this photo here, if you take off part of the joint or part of the, um, flesh comes out with the, with the claw there. So the project that I'm going to be talking about today actually just started, uh, we, we found a YouTube video a couple of years ago of somebody that had a, a different, um, removal method. So, um, similar to a lizard dropping its tail off when it feels threatened by a predator, crabs can do a similar thing. It's called autotomy or self-removal. So in this video, somebody caught a stone crab, they took a bait knife and stuck it in what you can think of as the elbow joint of the crab. Um, and it just dropped the claw off, but at what you can think of as the shoulder joint, which is where you would normally remove these claws. So we wanted to look at if that affected the survival rate of the crabs, uh, based on claw removal, uh, method. Um, and then from there, we wanted to engage with Fisher Networks to share any results from this, um, and just keep the kind of collaborative nature of, of the work up. So here's a quick little diagram, just looking at these two methods. Um, so for the purposes of this, autotomy is that, uh, different method where you puncture the soft joint in the crab's claw, uh, versus the force break, which we're calling the, the traditional method of just kind of cracking the claw off. So that's in the top, uh, figures here. It's just a sharp downward motion. Um, and then the bottom panel, panels here, um, is this autotomy or this self-removal. So we were just using an ice pick. It's just a thin stainless steel sharp tool, um, that you just puncture that soft membrane right halfway down the claw. And then the, the claw just drops off there. Uh, so we wanted to look at the differences between, um, claw removal technique, um, whether Fisher experience or harvester experience plays into survival and then how many claws, uh, that you take off of that, um, impact survival as well. So we should have a couple of videos here. So this first one is the traditional, um, force break method. So right there, just a sharp downward motion comes off.
So that's a good break.
Right there. And then this is showing, uh, another way that you can do this autotomy method, actually use the crab's opposite claw.
Oh, sounds so quick.
And then the method that we were using with this ice pick, um, this is John doing some of the, uh, removals in the experiment here. So, um, sometimes it takes a little wiggling around, but the crab is, is kind of doing most of the work there. There's not really any leveraging or, or forcing, forcing the claw off. Um, so there's a lot up here, but I'll go through it one by one. So in the top left here, um, all these graphs are the same. The X axis is just time. So after we did the claw removals using these two different methods, um, we kept crabs in our lab for about a month and a half. So across the horizontal axis there, that's just days. So from zero, which is when the claw removal occurred to forty days, so just, just about a month and a half. And then the survival probability is on the vertical axis there. So if you had a line that went straight across the top of the graph, that's a hundred percent survival. Um, so in that top left panel there, that's where we're comparing the number of claws removed. So this is with both methods combined. Um, and basically what you see is as predicted and as has been shown previously, a stepwise increase in, uh, mortality as you take more claws off. So more crabs die when you take two claws off than when you take one, than when you take zero. Um, the top right panel here is comparing harvester experience. So, um, John, the commercial fisherman who's been removing claws for fifteen or so years, uh, compared to myself, who is acting as a novice or recreational fisher. Um, again, as expected, you see a better survival rate with more experience. So the green line there, um, is John's survival rate there, which is about twenty percent higher than, uh, myself. And then the really interesting pain here is the, the bottom left. So this is looking at the different, um, harvest techniques. Um, so the green line across the bottom is this force break. So the traditional harvest method where we see about sixty percent of crabs are surviving. So again, pretty, pretty similar to, um, what we've seen in, in past studies. And then the two lines at the top are our control crabs, which had no claws removed and crabs that had claws removed using autotomy or this different method. Um, so you can see survival on average increased about thirty-one percent, um, and was just about even with our, our control group there, which is really interesting. Uh, we were also looking at whether any of these factors. We were also looking at whether any of these factors, so claw removal method or experience affected the onset of claw regeneration. So the claw bud, which is this first little nubbin that forms after a clause removed. And none of these factors affected the time to that claw bud starting to regenerate. So whether you took one or two claws off, whether you're experienced or novice, or interestingly, regardless of the harvest technique, claw regeneration starts at about 40 days across the board. So we didn't see any variation there. So from then, we wanted to again reengage with the fishers that kind of brought these questions to us in the first place. So we worked with John and a number of other fishers on Aluthra to co-design sort of a communications package that included a couple of infographics and a couple of short videos. So we co-designed the messaging to include Bahamian dialect. And we wanted to use sort of a grassroots snowball technique for our communications. So none of this work was actually posted on any of our institutes, social media or any of our normal communication channels. And everything was designed and formatted so that it could be shared through WhatsApp, which is how most of the fishermen that we work with communicate in the kind of app of of choice. So designed everything to be easily shareable through the Fisher networks as opposed to from an NGO's platform. Here's a quick look at a couple of the infographics. So we we actually made two of them. One of them specifically targeting fishermen in the Bahamas and stone crabbers. And then one for a bit of a broader audience. And then we have a short video here. Hopefully it will autoplay.
The all stone crab is new method, stone crab. You don't clip the bite up. You stick it in the joint and it releases itself. It's a new way of declawing the crab. So you gotta set up a post that ain't gonna move. You hold the crab. You can turn the vice and you can stick it in there, push it until the claw come off.
Using this new technique where stone crabs drop their biters is a great way to ensure that more crabs are surviving after you release them so that they can regrow their claw and go on to reproduce. So remember, don't clip the biter, stick it.
So that 45 second or so video is easily shareable. We have longer four and a half or five minute long video that I'll put a QR code link up to in a minute. And came up with that, well, John and a couple of the other guys came up with that slogan to try to make it catchy and memorable to promote this this different method. And then following the work and creating these communications materials, we co-hosted a series of Fisher workshops on four different islands in the Bahamas, where we had stone crabbers, Department of Marine Resources officers, the National Fisheries Association to come together and learn about the results from this and then start to have a conversation on next steps. We got a lot of good concerns that were brought up and kind of directions for for future study. And just basically to have a collaborative conversation about the potential to use this technique in the in the fishery. So with that, this QR code here links to the longer video. You can put it in your saver or watch later list if you want. And then we'll have some of these materials up at the poster session as well. But yeah, a big thank you to all the collaborators on this, especially John, who is in that video there. And with that, I'll take any questions. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Eric. Any questions?
Great talk. Thanks. Is there any benefit to the the quality of the product when you do it with the poking it? Because it seems like a much cleaner break and the the meat not spoil as quickly or I'm not sure what is involved in the processing past taking the claw off. But other other benefits that fishermen might say, oh, well, actually I can get more money because it's higher quality. And if I do it the possibly quicker way that I'm used to.
Yep, that's a good question. So that was one of the actually concerns that came up in the the meetings. So for example, in the crawfish fisher in the lobster fishery, if you hook the lobster tail, it can actually, and that animal goes on living and is harvested later, it can create this hard black, almost like a scar tissue, which does negatively affect the meat quality. So this was actually brought up as a concern of would this negatively impact the the meat quality? Could it introduce pathogens or from an aesthetics point be a mark against them for for an exporter? So that's something that we're talking to some of the food safety, food handling, safety people on on kind of next steps and trying to address this. For personal experience, we're not letting these claws go to waste that we're removing. So we haven't noticed any any decrease in the quality.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Eric. If you have any more questions, there is a banquet this afternoon. There's free food. You can see Eric there. Last up, Terrence will now pull it all together to talk about national intersectoral linkages across the Caribbean. An intersectoral linkage is one of the teams for IAF in the Western Central Atlantic. And so Terrence will close us out this afternoon.
Okay, good afternoon. Good afternoon, all. My brief presentation looks at national intersectoral links with Caribbean artisanal fisheries and aquaculture and considerations and cases. As Eric was saying, national intersectoral linkages in ecosystem approach and ecosystem approach to fisheries are becoming increasingly prominent, given the interest in advancing integrated approaches to sustainable development in the Caribbean with fisheries and aquaculture livelihoods and organizations being at the core of the interactions. Sorry, enough to. This in the the brief investigation, it was a very limited timeframe within which we had to do this work. The investigation sought to get a better understanding of some national intersectoral linkages and their weaknesses of our opportunities, because they have to be seen both in terms of weaknesses and the opportunities that you can obtain across key economic sectors. And some of the sectors we looked at were agriculture, transportation, tourism, manufacturing and energy. And then we sought to apply this conceptual framework to two cases, one being from Guyana and the other one from St. Vincent and the Grenadines. When we think of value chains, we tend to see them as simple and sequential linear stages. Basically, from harvest, processing, consumer and the linkages there. But when we, but most value chains are actually very complex networks, which can be used to illustrate nonlinear market links that is we can look at things like governance, governing interactions and the sort of other linkages that go with nonlinear marketing, with non-marketing links, including governance interactions with other parts of the social ecological system featuring other socioeconomic sectors. Sorry, that's it there. These give you some examples of linkages between tourism and fisheries. For example, we are aware of fish fry events which attract tourists in the Caribbean in some of the islands like St. Lucia, Grenada. We could also set up a simple generic value chain and show the linkages as we look along the generic value chains with other sectors. If we can consider, for example, the impact of agriculture on the aquatic ecosystem. Or if we get down to the post harvest area and we can consider fish and fish products going into the tourism sector. So we can set up very simple generic value chains that show these linkages as well. Recognizing that the linkages will vary within depending on the situation, the country, etc. When we look at national intersectoral linkages, coordination becomes very important among the various sectors. However, we need to recognize that these this would be very complex in terms of their copy dealing with competing and conflicting interests. And bringing them around the table poses its own challenges. This is this is one of the major problems we face in the Caribbean where we've been trying to establish national intersectoral coordinating mechanisms or fisheries advisory committees and finding challenges in ensuring that they function effectively. Now, in terms of the case studies, the two, the first case study was in relation to Guyana. And here we focused on the impact of the rapidly developing oil and gas sector on the small scale fisheries and on small scale brackish water aquaculture associated with diversification in the sugar industry. In Guyana, the small scale fisheries are an important component, the the an important provider of food and sort of nutrition, employment and provide export earnings. In 2015, the Atlantic offshore discoveries, oil discoveries in Guyana has initiated an economic boom. And so what we have happening right now is the economy is being taken over by the oil and gas sector, which is driving development in the country. The government in itself is saying it's committed to an intersectoral development approach, utilizing oil revenues to look at things like education, health and the non-oil sectors. We will be waiting to see that. This, however, in terms of small scale fisheries, it poses challenges both in terms poses challenges and provides opportunities as well. For example, just a few of the the challenges, you see the list of challenges and opportunities. There's a mix. We're in terms of the marine space now that they're developing rapidly a number of offshore operations. We face the threat of oil spills. And if these are not adequately catered for, then they can be destructive to the economy. Without and the fishers themselves are unaware of what roles they may play in combating and dealing with oil spills. Coming out of the COVID era, the fishers were experiencing low catches. And they began to relate or they were arguing that these catches were related to the offshore oil and gas industry operations. The government sought assistance from FAO to do a rapid assessment. And they were putting forward it. They were claiming that this was more due to climate change, which of course has been challenged. And we are waiting that report. In terms of the likely opportunities coming from the development of an oil and gas sector in Guyana for fisheries, when one considers the number of offshore operations being established and the need for food, that's could be an opportunity for fish and fish products, depending on what are called the local content regulations as well as the application of these regulations. There are other likely opportunities, the oil and gas boom. We now have a number of hotels and restaurants being constructed. And this could lead to more local utilization of the fish cat from the artisanal fisheries. This of course poses problems in relation to quality, maintaining supply and things like that. The other likely opportunity would be the population in Guyana is now increasing because there are a number of skill and other labor types coming into the country. They may be earning better incomes and maybe looking for more value added type fish and fish products. In terms of the sugarcane industry and the brackish water shrimp culture farming, the two other areas we looked at, brackish water shrimp culture farming has been taking place in Guyana from about 1970. And at present, they have about 69 active farms covering about 1,800 acres and employing about 600 people. This is in the eastern part of Guyana, an area we call quarantine. This activity has been going on for quite a few decades with the fish and shrimp going mainly to the local communities and the diaspora Guyanese living in the US and Canada. They utilize the efficient shrimp coming out from these operations. There is a demand, the the demand is increasing. And so this provides an opportunity for for the development. The government is supposedly looking at this opportunity in terms of the diversification of the sugar industry. Between 2000, from about 2016 in Guyana, they have been diversing the sugar industry, which has led at one time to the closure of sugar estates. These are operations within our rural areas that produce sugar for export and local consumption. And because of the market trends and demands, the demand for sugar has been reducing. So they had to downscale or diversify the industry. They saw in this diversification, aquaculture is brackish water culture is being seen as an opportunity. It however, has its own problems in that the why is the government is committed, it seems to this level of diversification and providing the opportunities. The fisher, the fish farmers themselves are not fully aware of how to access the investments to pursue these opportunities. The same goes for the laid off workers who are coming out of the sugar industry. The other case looked at the it was done for St. Vincent and the Grenadines and looked at the potential impact of a port modernization project proposed for an area called Rose Place in Kingston, which is the capital, which is close to the capital in St. Vincent. And this would have led to the displacement of a community as well as we're looking at in the Grenadine Islands, sea moss farming, mariculture and tourism. In terms of the port modernization, this what we're seeing witnessing here is how a major national development project got an impact on the fishing community. In a sense, we may argue that the government having weighed the benefits of modernizing the ports and its impact on trade, determined that they could dis relocate the fishing community to another area without fully taking into consideration the impact on this community. The result really is one where the community, there was a level of resistance from the community to this relocation. But it's still happening. The what we can look at here is to the extent that the fishers, even though they are organized, they were not organized enough or they did not have the the capacity to really sit and negotiate with the government and the other important actors who would have would more benefit from port modernization. In relation to this, we could also see some opportunity in that the government at the same time is arguing that they would like to move the inshore fishing fleet to become an offshore fishing fleet utilizing bigger vessels, which may be able to use this of these modern port facilities. In the Grenadines from the early 2000, sorry, yeah. In the Grenadines from early 2000, they have been producing sea moss, utilizing the sea moss to produce beverages, cosmetics, soaps and other products as well as exporting dried sea moss. This was a very small operation, but it's becoming more and more interlinked to the tourism sector. And as such, it's expanding and more and more farmers are becoming, are getting into this activity. So this this the sea moss is developing rapidly. They're getting funds through through government and TNC. They're big. They've been able to access Jeff Small Grants. And the sea moss farmers are producing more and more sea moss and more and more products. What we can see here is a close link between the development of the tourism industry in the Grenadine Islands and the development of a sea moss type industry. But with them both being subject to various threats, for example, climate change can impact on both the tourism industry as well as the sea moss development and likewise Sargassum. on both the tourism industry as well as the sea moss development and likewise Sargassum. Sorry. Yeah. The other, finally, we're looking at the, the need for better attention to be paid to these links. What we can see coming out of the simple case, the two simple case studies was the need for more multi-sector stakeholder intersectoral governance. Few and, and they, within the region, as I've said before, we have very few real functioning national intersectoral coordinating mechanisms. So we need, if we are going to be looking at national intersectoral linkages and looking at intersectoral development, integrated intersectoral development, then we have to pay more attention to improving on these coordinating bodies, making sure that they have adequate representation from the various sectors, as well as building their capacity to undertake this type of coordination. Thank you.
Excellent. Uh, thank you very much, Terrence. We are just about out of time. Uh, so please see Terrence at the banquet this afternoon. Uh, if you have any more questions for him about a national intersectoral linkages in Guyana or in Saint Vincent and the Grenadines. And so with that, I thank you all very much for joining our special session on IAFA and linking it to the blue economy. Uh, for our presenters, we have a special token on behalf of FAO. So please see me and we will get that special token for you. And for the general audience, we also have some T-shirts uh to celebrate IAFA. So please see myself or Berta, who will raise her hand. Uh, yes, Berta is at the back. So please see Berta if you want some special IAFA T-shirt. So thank you all very much and I appreciate your time.
And since we're a little bit behind on schedule, but we have the banquet later where we have vehicles leaving at six thirty. We, we are hoping that for this coffee break, if you can grab things and come back in and enjoy your coffee and snacks while the fishes forum is happening, that would help us get back on time. So please, if you can get it in sort of like ten to twelve minutes, um, and we will ring the bell when we want to start so we can get everything, give our fishes enough time to have their, so we don't cut off time for our fishers. And then we can leave on time for, to the party where there will be food and alcohol. So.
Good evening everyone. My name is Cecil Marquez from Grenada. I am the 2018 Gladden winner. My good friend, Will forgot to mention my name. That's okay, he's my good friend. Firstly, let us, I am the master of ceremony this afternoon. So I decide on the time given to speakers. I'm very fortunate to be, or equal than others, I have extra time. But firstly, let us thank the GCFI board for having us here one more time. And secondly, I would like to thank the Gladden organizing committee, who went through here to organize this session. It was hard work, but the will drove us through it. Let me say a very good, a very good afternoon and warm welcome to this 75th GCIF fishes forum. I am immensely grateful and honored to be standing here doing this introduction. I stand here today with a profound belief and full commitment to our cause as a fisherman and as a conservationist. This is not for any personal reason, but for the good of all mankind. I stand here today to motivate you to keep a dream and a vision burning, a vision of a man called Peter Gladden. The philosophy of this man's dream should never falter, it should never flicker and wane into the history with the passage of time. The dream. This is the year of IAFA. There can be nothing more right and fitting but to recognize those hardworking fisherfolks who do the most dangerous job on earth, United Nations statement. Those brave folks who go out into the deep and whose eyes and skin burn from the salt and the wind and the rain and who has to face a danger behind every swell. So thank you to IAFA for recognizing the kind of sacrifice fisherfolks make. I would also like to urge for more help in this area of development. And I always say, every day should be like that, every week, every month, every year, every decade should be, recognize the fisherfolks for the kind of work that they do and the contribution to food security, to feed nations around the world, communities, providing a good standard of living for families, you know, to take care of their children, food, medicine, education, and lots of other things. These people are the bedrocks upon which families depend. I would also like to recognize the role of women in this industry before it was mainly male dominated. I was there for like what 40 years and I never had seen a woman going out, now we have women going into the deep. I know time is upon us, so I have to just run through. We know that throughout the Caribbean, because of COVID, we had so much problems with the industry. Export was a problem. Market was a problem. And then we have, we've had devastating effects because of climate change, sargassum, erosion of soils, destruction of fishing grounds. But we are bouncing back, right? Gradually, we are getting back there because COVID had brought a halt to the earth, to the world. This session hopes to provide a glimpse of how some communities bounce back, how some communities respond, how they adapt and are recovering. And then we have to see, we have to see all these things from the lens of fisherfolks, right, actual fishermen. So we, we will go into that. But we look at what does it teach us? What can we learn from these experiences? Where do we go from here? We ask ourselves these questions. Where do we go from here? What lessons we learn from the scourge of, of COVID? And how are we going to cope in the future? This is, this is of critical importance. So let us, let us all harness the experiences and challenges of the past to build stronger alliances with our fishing communities. Let us build stronger bridges of communication and support. Let us all continue to keep our helping hands outstretched in solidarity with our fishing families. I want to stop here because in the interest of time, I have to stop here. I could go on for maybe till tomorrow. I hope that if you have any, if you have any questions, you know, that banquet tonight, if you don't get drunk, then we could talk. All right, so the, the game of cricket is played when you're in order, when you'll have a lineup batting order. So let me, there is a gentleman here among us who is, you know, we have to recognize and he's from the Bahamas, it's Minister Von Miller. I would like him to come here and speak to us, you know, he's a minister of natural resources, right? So Mr. Von Miller, the mic is yours.
Everybody seems to have gone to sleep already. Good evening everyone. It's an honor to be here. It's my first time and by God's grace, it wouldn't be my last time. I did not come alone, I came with company and accompanying me as a session chair, Mr. Cecil Marquez, former Gladden Award winner stated. I'm the minister of not just natural resources, but also the environment. And Mr. Prescott Smith told me, shared with me about the conference and then he thought it was an excellent idea for us to be here. And so we're here primarily to support him and to learn and to glean as you've already been doing. So I just, if you'd permit me, now you know, it's a dangerous thing to give a politician the microphone and don't give him a time. But I shall govern myself accordingly. But with me, of course, Mr. Prescott Smith, we're here to support him, but the acting director, director of a forestry department, of which the mangroves are part of, is Ms. Danielle Hanneck, just stand to the conservator, Ms. Hanneck. Also, a senior officer in the Ministry of the Environment and Natural Resources, Mr. Gillis Deal with us. Then the consultant in the Ministry of Environment and for all the legal advice we need. Then the consultant in the Ministry of Environment and for all the legal advice we need, we go to him, Mr. Fain Thompson. And my executive assistant and media person, she's responsible for all of our publications and all of that, she's the audio, the video and everything, Mrs. Samantha Black. Much of what I would, some of what I have to say is about Mr. Smith, so bear with me. There'll be a mixture of some, but just, just bear with me, please. Firstly, again, it's an honor to be here. We're not so far from here. We're in the Bahamas, just south of Florida. I want to say to your session chair, the former Gladden Award winner, Mr. Cecil Marquez, to Mr. Henry Vales, Chairman of the Board of Directors for GCFI, distinguished board members to Dr. Alejandro Acosta, Chairman of the Conference, Dr. Will Hayman, LGL Ecological Research, and to honorees, particularly our good friend, our compatriot, the son of our soil, Mr. Prescott Smith. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. The Bahamas, the island, the country of over seven hundred islands where we've come from, is a member of the following environmental action groups: coral reef protection and restoration, mangrove ecosystems and livelihoods, marine protected areas, ocean acidification, ocean and climate change, ocean observation, sustainable aquaculture, and the sustainable blue economy. By way of history, it is believed that the fly fishing industry has been around in the Bahamas since the early nineteen forties, but was never really organized or properly regulated. I am told that this industry is one that generates over a hundred and forty million dollars annually, according to an economic survey executed a few years ago, but it has the potential to generate as much as a half a billion dollars annually, particularly in our family of islands where most of these small businesses exists as lodges. For those of you who do not know, in the Bahamas, everywhere outside of New Providence, we call the family of islands. It used to be called outer islands. Some people still call them outer islands, but we want to be interconnected, so we call them the family of islands. As more of these operations come on stream, additional opportunities will become available for a greater number, a greater number of Bohemians to become involved. There's a belief that our country's fly fishing industry has the potential to be a multi-billion dollar industry in the future, once sustainably maintained. Consequently, our country can reap tremendous benefits from exploring this sector. And it has been noted by many that the fly fishing industry in the Bahamas has the potential to become much more lucrative in comparison than the traditional tourism sectors such as the cruise ships, hotels, restaurants, and other sectors. On January the ninth, twenty seventeen, a little over five years ago, the regulations governing the fly fishing industry in the Bahamas came into effect. And it would be remiss of me not to mention that the passage of this law, of this legislation, was accumulation of years of hard work between the Bahamas Ministry of Agriculture and Marine Resources, the Bahamas Ministry of Tourism, and the Bahamas Fly Fishing Industry Association, a body to which Mr. Prescott Smith serves as president, and he has been an advocate for this for such a long time. These regulations, which we will seek to have amended very soon, presently require anglers above the age of twelve who wish to fish on the flats to apply for a personal angler's license and pay a prescribed fee. Non-citizens presently pay fifteen dollars for a license for a day, twenty dollars for a week, thirty dollars for a month, and sixty dollars for the year. I'll let that sink in. The regulations also require foreign vessels wishing to fish on our flats to obtain the usual sports fishing permit, and each person on the vessel intending to fish in the flats for them to hold a personal angler's license. The regulations also ban commercial fishing in the flats. Anglers are allowed only to catch and release when fishing for bonefish, permit, snook, kobia, and the tarpon. The new law also led to the establishment of a conservation fund, a portion of which has been earmarked for the management and protection of the flats and fisheries resources throughout the Commonwealth of the Bahamas. Recently, my ministry, the Ministry of the Environment and Natural Resources, through our forestry department of which Ms. Hanneck is the acting director, appointed several fly fishing guides as game wardens with the view to having them report all perceived illegal activities on the flats or for that matter anywhere in our country's marine protected areas to report them to the relevant authorities. On taking note of the theme for this year's seventy-fifth Annual Gulf and Caribbean Fishing Institute Conference, Fisherfolk Recovery and Resilience During Times of Change, I recognize its appropriateness as it is one which has relevance to all of us, particularly those of us residing in this, the Gulf area and the Caribbean. Because many of us would have had our respective livelihoods and resources on which we depend impacted both by the COVID-19 pandemic and the changing marine conditions brought on by climate change. For those of us in the Bahamas, especially Hurricane Dorian, by which, you know hurricanes are rated in five categories. Executive Secretary of the United Nations rated Dorian category hell. It devastated Abaco and Grand Bahama. Destroyed lives. Many persons died. Damaged properties, businesses, homes. Well into the billions of dollars that we've not yet recovered from. Forty percent approximately of the mangroves in Abaco were destroyed. About seventy percent of the mangroves in Grand Bahama were destroyed. The environment where us as human beings live impacts all of us. As we begin to think beyond ourselves and think globally, we recognize that our islands, our countries, our regions, the hemisphere are all connected, and we must rely on each other. We all depend on the world's natural resources to support ourselves and to support our families in sustainable ways. Therefore, as the Minister responsible for the Environment and Natural Resources for the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, it is this connectivity that I wish to promote through the policies that the government of the Bahamas sets and implements to the benefit of the everyday, regular, common citizen. A similar view continually expressed, of course, by Mr. Prescott Smith, who all of us who know Mr. Smith would fully agree that he's a Bohemian nationalist. He believes in promoting the economic empowerment of Bohemians through the sustainable use of our many natural resources in our country. Mr. Smith has always been passionate about the development of a grassroots conservation model. He is an advocate for policies and legislation that promote Bohemian ownership and participation. Mr. Smith has an in-depth knowledge of the history and the value of the natural environment, focusing particularly on the protection of our unique Bohemian natural resources, which comprises of, but are not limited to, the largest mangrove nursery system in the Caribbean and the Western world, the largest flats and bonefish population on the planet, the largest concentration of blue holes on the planet, the greatest concentration of coral reefs in the Caribbean and the Western world, and the third-largest barrier reef system surpassed only by Australia and the Baileys. I have been advised, and if I have been ill-advised, I expect the previous Gladden Award winner and the board members and for those of you who has been attending this conference for a long time to correct me and to correct me immediately. But I have been advised that the prestigious Gladden Memorial Award is only given to those fishes who have displayed an enduring vision for the sustainable and wise utilization of the world's marine resources over the years. Have I been correctly advised? Talk to me, y'all, talk to me. Have I been correctly advised? Thank you. Therefore, today, this moment is a historic one and a proud one for all Bohemians as we witness our local Peter Gladden in the person of Mr. Prescott Smith, a profound and prolific fisher, an advocate, and an influential conservationist, as he received the Gladden Memorial Award for which he was a 2021 recipient. Mr. Prescott Smith, on behalf of the Prime Minister, the Honorable Philip Edward Brave Davis, and the government of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, and on behalf of a small but proud nation, we've accompanied here, we've accompanied you here to this occasion just to say congratulations for the hard work, for the long, for the tireless efforts, and for all that have been done for the attacks and everything against you. But you're still tall, you're still strong. We are proud of you, and we had to be here with you in this special moment. So we say congratulations to you, Brother Smith, and to this seventy-fifth CGFI Conference Organizing Committee, we extend a sincere and heartfelt thank you for recognizing our noble son. Thank you very much. In my conclusion, I wish to assure you that the Bahamas stand with you in this fight. It's a fight for our survival. Indeed, it's a fight for our very existence. The legacy that we will leave for our children begins today. When we attended the Oceans Conference in Lisbon, Portugal, we discovered, it is said, if we continued on the present trajectory that we are on, by the year 2050, there will be more plastic in the ocean than fish. And so the work we have ahead of us is serious, and we must be focused and deliberate. It was at the Oceans Conference that we formed an unofficial organization, COW. It's called the Coalition of the Willing in the fight to protect our ocean, in the fight for climate justice, in the fight for greater preservation and conservation of our marine resources, and in the fight to protect life on planet Earth. Let us continue to take action now to ensure that there's a brighter tomorrow for those our inheritors and successors. Distinguished scholars, ladies and gentlemen, I thank you very much. The luta continua, the struggle continues. Thank you.
Described as a tiny, fragile ball of life hanging in the void, the earth has held captive the heart and imagination of humanity for countless centuries by its vast mysterious complexity and splendor. Nestled neatly in the bosom of the Americas is an impressive array of...
So it seems as if we have a little technical difficulty with that. The plan was to just transition straight into Prescott's. In the interest of time, I'm going to share another video of our other GMA winner, which is Mimi Stafford, and then hopefully we'll be able to share Prescott's video after.
Stafford, my husband Simon and I came to the Keys in the early seventies, fresh out of college, where we'd studied oceanography and marine biology, and we had thought we would get jobs in our field, but there were very few available in the Keys at that time. And as it happened, we became commercial fishermen as we just enjoyed being on and under the water. And we've had a good life, ended up staying all these years and raising our family here. And our son has remained part of the fishing industry. His, he grew up fishing for sponges with me when he was little and stone crabs. Also would go on our stone crab boat. And then he has now graduated to running, he's the captain of the Key Limey, the forty-three foot Torres. And my husband has come back more or less with me on Pac-Man, which is a twenty-four-foot T-Craft. We have enjoyed being a part of the Keys environment and part of the Keys fishery and would like for the future to be a brighter place for the next generation. We've been involved in a lot of environmental protection for the fisheries and for the environment as a whole and have great concern about the general degradation that I have seen over the years. My husband Simon and I were involved in the discussions of the trap production program for the lobster fishery and eventually for the stone crab fishery as well, having been involved in having a science background basically and having traveled and seen other fisheries. We believe that our fishery was overcapitalized and thought that the only way there was going to be a future to reduce the number of effort in the fishery. And that would also give the fishermen a business basically to be able to sell when they got older. And I've also been involved more recently in doing some restoration work with sponge loss due to hurricanes and environmental changes. Shelley Krueger, our local Florida cooperative's extension agent, shares a passion for sponges with me, and we have done quite a good restoration project on the Atlantic side. We've got about... We've got about fifteen, fifteen or sixteen hundred cuttings that we have placed on the sea bottom, and they're doing really well and kind of restoring the environment. When I was young, I thought that my generation would leave the world a better place. And I've been a little disappointed that things have deteriorated as much as they have. And I think we've got a lot of work to do. And I think if we work together for solutions, there still is hope. I don't find it possible to give up, but it is, it is a bit discouraging to see the lack of attention on climate change issues and the environment in general. I have grandchildren now. I have one here and one little boy here and a little boy in Australia. My daughter immigrated to Australia where she and her husband are professors, they're economists out there. And they have one child and another one on the way. And I would really love to think that the world is a, is a hopeful and a brighter, better place for them to grow up in. So I really would love to encourage as many people as are willing to get involved in solutions. Pick something that speaks to you and, and act on it. And thank you very much. I so appreciate the award and the nomination. Thank you very much, Don Di Maria, for that. And I hope that I can meet people in the future and make some difference. Thank you.
Described as a tiny, fragile ball of life hanging in the void, the earth has held captive the heart and imagination of humanity for countless centuries by its vast mysterious complexity and splendor. Nestled neatly in the bosom of the Americas is an impressive array of islands known as the Caribbean. In the northern portion of these islands, we find a robust system of aquatic and terrestrial harmony, home to the largest coral reef and mangrove nursery system in the Western world. I give you the Bahamas. The Bahamas also holds several of the world's titles, ranging from the third largest barrier reef to the greatest concentration of blue holes, flats, and bonefish population, among many others. Each resource displays incredible features and functionality that support the existence of hundreds of the earth's marine and wildlife species. It is of highest priority that we sensitize our fellow Bohemian citizens and visitors alike to bolster our culture of conservation and to cultivate a sustainable future for these most precious and finite resources.
So, we, earlier on I spoke about the involvement of women in fisheries, right? Actual fishers. And my dream is one day I'll bring an actual fisher here, a woman fisher who goes into the deep and face what we face, what I've been facing for the last forty years. We have a very interesting lady here. Miss Sylvia White from the island of Barbados, Vice President of Barbados National Union Fish Books Organization, a member of Central Fish Processors Association. So she's going to give us a very brief, because we pressed for time, very brief talk on fisher folk adaptation and resilience to change, the Barbados experience. Ms. White? Now, if you see a red light, it means stop, right? Stop, stop is stop. So you may get in trouble if you don't stop. Okay, Ms. White?
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening. Good evening to everyone. He said, my name is Sylvia White. I am not a fisherwoman. I am a product of a fisherman. And my family has been in the fishing industry for generations. I've picked up my legacy from them. And here I am today. I am a fish processor by profession. I joined the industry twenty-nine years ago. And that was to sustain my new family at the time. And here I am today, still going at it. I was born in the beautiful, I was born at the beautiful parish of St. Joseph in Barbados and in a small fisher village of Temple B in St. Joseph, on the eastern coast of the island. And this picture would show my generation of fisher folks with my dad being a fisherman, boat builder, and you know, the whole works where it comes to the fishing industry. My grandmother being a vendor until she turned ninety-four. And she lived as long as a hundred. And she's now featured on our sixty-five cent stamp for the centenarians in Barbados. And my mom, my sisters, and my brothers, and my nieces, and my daughter working alongside each other and processing fish. I'm also part of a popular theater group called Voices from the Shore. And this was created to, to save space for employing issues and attitudes, sharing knowledge, and integrating actions for positive social change within the industry. This process involves the use of singing, dancing, personal testimony, storytelling, portrae, role-play, games, and other cultures. And you will hear favorite songs like Pull Them Away, Man, Pull Them Away, Man, Pull Them Away, Man, Pull Them, okay? The objectives of the presentation, the main objectives of my presentation is to use my journey as a fisher, as a woman in fisheries, to focus on a number of key issues and changes that affect fishers, examining how fisher folk have sought to manage and respond to those issues. The presentation looks to share a snapshot of the challenges we as small-scale fishers, fisher folks have faced and are still currently facing in Barbados and, and our best way of practice for fisher folks to find and overcome these challenges. Key issues and challenges affecting us. COVID-19, the protocols limited us for seal, social distancing, created long lines. Sales of fish dropped tremendously. Significant, you know, prices went skyrocket for everything. And we had to find new ways of working throughout the COVID time. The sarcasm CV was another issue. It caused smaller catch. The increase of price of fuel. And boats no longer, you know, it was difficult. It turned around times was difficult because sales were slow and yields were small. Full storage facilities later reduction and capacity, risks of spoilage, reduced income for processors. Climate change affected fish abundance and making livelihoods uncontrollable and unpredictable. Limited social protection was also an issue. State-provided programs fail to deliver a safety net to shield fishers from adverse effects on livelihood. It reduced efficiency effectiveness of fisher folks organizations, declining in levels of cooperation, industry becoming individualistic and socially fragmented. Working outside of the, here's an alternative to, to what the issues was. And some alternatives to what the issues was. We had to resort to doing different things to sustain ourselves. Working outside of the industry was an alternative. And here I am today. I'm working for the last, well, three months outside of the industry, but I've moved to tourism. And I've moved to an area where I can still, you know, provide customer relation. I am working the call center for the Barbados Tourism Marketing, Inc. And my contract is six months. So that was one of the key things that led to us moving on, you know, finding different ways to work. We had to utilize fish storage to make feed, fertilizers for animals, and a vibrant alternative source of income also. New ways of working, more marketing, personalizing orders, making deliveries, and the use of social media during the COVID pandemic. We had to actually literally possess our fish, parcel them out, and drive round house to house to secure seals. The informal social protection was an issue. Support from relatives, with, with, with support from relatives and close friends, meet and turns, and community awareness was what kept us together. Then we were offered as a part of the frontline workers, we was offered the advantage of cashing in on a care care insurance plan for frontline workers, which was extended to the fisher folks by the government. And a lot of the fisher folks took advantage of that because that gave them a safety net to secure something for their family, for their families, you know, at a later stage. Supporting, supporting fisher folk. The fishing industry in Barbados employs about 6,000 persons in a population of 288,000. Initiative, initiatives involving fishermen should be strongly supported by the government. Female-headed households are frequent in fisheries. And, and most women in the industry are sole providers of their households. They are differently, they are differently impacted during the off-seasons. Social protection schemes for fisher folks along the value chain, inclusive of, inclusive of social insurance programs designed specifically for fisher folks give this seasonality of their work or our work, I would say. There's an increased need for fisheries to be more fully integrated into the regional food and nutrition security policy. My conclusion. Let's let us put our hearts, minds, and minds together to shape a better future for the fishing sector, representing millions of people across the world, and also think about larger alliance for the traditional natural source-based communities. I bring to light the, of everyone, a glimpse of the challenges and opportunities of small-scale fisher people. I am well-known for advocating change, training, and improving the quality of fruit products for local consumption and export. We assert strongly that nothing for us without us. Thank you. I'm, I'm well within my time?
Yeah.
Um.
I think.
I had a piece to do.
Thank you very much. Well done. But we are just going to charge you for extra time. Just before, we've come to a very important part of this evening's exercise, but I want, just want to recognize briefly the fishers from Bonet. My friend back there, can you just, you know, signal to us, you know, and we welcome you. And I hope later we'll get a chance to, you know, to chat a bit. Now, we are all fishers. Now, this is very important, and my friend here is going to carry out a very important task. The presentation award, so.
Yeah, do you have those slides as well? Yeah, so, yeah, no, this is great. So I'm going to welcome the other award winners that we have here up to join us on the platform, if you gentlemen would be so kind as to join us.
I hope he doesn't forget me this time.
It's going to be hard. It's going to be hard. So, yeah. This is, we're going to keep this short. We've got all kinds of time this afternoon, this evening, to enjoy each other's company, to chat with these winners. Unfortunately, Mimi Stafford, who was going to be here and enjoy the honor of getting her award in person, has gotten COVID. And so she had her award FedExed to her, and she should be ideally listening virtually and, and, and getting this. But we are having Prescott here, so we'll offer that award to him in person, and I'll let Scott take over for that.
Great. It's, it's an honor to be back on the stage again. Everybody that's involved, GC, GCFI, understand that the Gliding Memorial Award is a very worthwhile thing. These, these folks that get this go back to their communities, carry the GCFI message, the things they learn here, this message of sustainability, all the great works. Gliding Conservation Committee is doing great things. We appreciate Will and everybody's hard work, and it's, it's just, just a great thing that we're glad to be part of. Prescott Smith met this gentleman in the Bahamas a few years ago, prior to COVID. We realized on a trip through EDF that I was there, we were fighting the same battles, the same people, the same corporations, fighting for the rights of, of these small-scale fishers and the guide fleets and wanting sustainability and accountability in our fishers. We became good, dear friends. I nominated him. I'm so glad he got the award. This guy has fought with everything, his business, his life, to do great. to do great things in this country. And he deserves a spot on the stage as well. And I'm glad he got the award. Prescott, would you please come up? I, I fully expect he is gonna be a great steward of this organization and be actively involved in the Gladding Conservation Committee. And we're honored to have you receive this and, and keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
So with that, I also wanna, go ahead. Were you gonna? Okay, that sounds good. So I'll say this and we'll end with you and that is let's congratulate Mimi too. Unfortunately, she's not here, but let's give her a big hand. And as soon as we're over here, buses will leave for, for our event from the hotel at six thirty to go to Bro Tulos at seven. So thanks.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be very short, but I would like Valdemir and Virginia. Okay, Danielle, would you join me here, please? Just, I'm gonna speak very briefly because of the time. But I'd like for you to join me up here. You've already heard from our minister. But what I have to say is, is very important in terms of the way forward for conservation. I, while I am passionate about the Bahamas and some of the resources of the country were highlighted, I will share briefly with you. I remember fishing a, a female astronaut years ago and she said, Prescott, she said, you know, the US government is aware that you have the largest mangrove nursery system in the entire Western world. But what I recognized was while we are the caretakers of that, it belongs to us all. And so I was involved in training of guides in the British Virgin Islands. I've been involved in Cuba with developing their sports fishing. And I asked these individuals to join here because I am supportive of the work that Valdemir and Virginia involve in in Belize or anywhere through the region. The resources of the Bahamas put billions of dollars into the economy of the United States. A lot of these things we're not aware of. My father was the first bohemian to build a fishing lodge. He developed the saltwater fly that revolutionized the entire saltwater fly fishing industry. So many mega companies in the United States, in Canada and Europe, it was a bohemian who developed it. And he believed in conservation. And so I'm emphasizing this because Danielle Valdemir, I am an advocate for a model of conservation that is about empowering ordinary citizens. Our whole region is vulnerable to, we talk a lot about conservation, but yet these individuals are constantly struggling for the resources that they need to actually do the work on the ground. And whether it's another big bauxite mine in Jamaica, whether they're stripping and destroying their resources in the land in Haiti or a limestone mine in Belize, we have a proposal for five thousand acre. And so while the minister, I'm grateful for him being here to support me, I am equally here to support him because he stood up with integrity when many powerful interests would rather them to compromise. So I accept this on behalf of these individuals here on a conservation model that would seek to give the tools to local communities to empower them to use the resources in a sustainable way. Thank you very much. Yes. I, I didn't realize I was allowed to call some names, but I was inspired by the Environmental Defense Fund who came to assist us in the Bahamas when very powerful interests tried to stop the legislation from passing. And the relationship between EDF and Bahamas Sports Fishing and Fly Fishing didn't grew just because of what EDF said. I saw the example that they set in Cuba, in Belize, through empowering ordinary citizens. And that is the kind of support that Valdemir and Virginia, Director of Forestry, because they have really tough job. Imagine being the director of the largest mangrove nursery system in the Western world. I saw it in Belize. They need your financial support. At the end of the day, if we are to stem a lot of talk about conservation, while huge developments continue to destroy our environment and we can come to more conferences like this and we will have less and less at the end of the day. So I encourage you to support the work that they're doing. Thank you very much. Okay, um, um, thank you. Prescott, welcome into the fold. We hope that you'll continue the great work and bring something to the Gladding Committee. Folks, this is the end of our session. I am very sorry and I'm gonna ask that the next time the, the Board of Directors give us a whole day because we have so much to talk about. There is so much that we couldn't, we couldn't bring here to the table, you know, I, I want to speak for the whole towards. And I'm sure that Scott and others would be, be like that. So I'm asking Brother Bob to look into that seriously. See Bob there. So, this is the end of it and if we have to speak a little later over a drink or two, well, so be it. But we must remember that as fishers, we play a great role in sustainability, in feeding nations and providing a better living conditions for vulnerable, vulnerable people. We endeavor to, the Gladding Committee, to continue with our good work or hard work with indomitable will and spirit. The guys that I would like to mention right here, Scott and, and Bob, Don and my good friend Will. I, you can guarantee that we'll always be there. Ruth is there and Berta and, and Maria and some people that I haven't seen for a long, very long time. And I hope that next time we'll be able to interact for longer periods because GCFI is real again, right? I hate, I hate this virtual thing. I like to see and feel and hear and touch. And as we leave here, let us leave in good spirit and let us ask for God's blessing in our way back. So good evening and we shall see you at the banquet. Okay, let's give, let's give a big round of applause.
Thank you, everyone. And remember that the shuttles will be leaving from the island, the island resort from six thirty. So please be ready. Thank you.